Call us room without. Because we're pretty close.
Actually, one of my, uh, one of my, well, I have several former players that have played in the college.
Please ask for some silence here.
Sorry.
Do you start the meeting? All right. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's stand for a moment of silence, please. For, for two things. The first, um, we heard about the shooting death of 15-year-old Jason Benson Green in Brockton at the end of September, and then also for the people affected by the turmoil in Israel and Gaza this week. May now be seated. Thank you. So first item on the agenda is our student representatives' report. And Brittany?
Welcome all to the month of October, the spookiest month of the school year. This month is all about staying in our HAWK spirit while incorporating this spooky season. Our football team has been crushing at this season and will be continuing to play amazingly. We have our football senior night on October 19th, which will also be our homecoming game. We will be playing Diamond Regional and anticipate a win. We will also have our senior nights for the following teams. Field hockey on October 23rd, cross-country and girls soccer on October 24th, boys soccer on October 25th, and volleyball on October 27th. I hope to see all of you there supporting our Southeastern seniors in their last season playing for the HAWKs. All of our teams are also having pink games that will be in support of breast cancer awareness. I hope to see all of you there decked in pink for our team. Our cheer team will also be competing in an invitation- invitational competition to represent our Southeastern community in Norin on October 22nd and a cheer fall invitational at Tri-County on October 29th. That's for our Lady HAWKs. For the month of October, our student council will be hosting numerous events during the month. To start, they will be hosting a Latinx celebration in which will include dancing, food, craft on October 19th. They will have a Halloween spooky gram, which will be sold during the lunch blocks and will be delivered on Halloween to the participating students. Lastly, they will have a Halloween contest for the students. Our Skills USA chapter will be feeding the football team on October 19th. They are excited to give a yummy dinner to them before their important homecoming game. The homecoming game will be held on, by the, the homecoming dance will be held by the Travel Club on October 20, 2023. Will be, we will expect to have a night full of dancing and enjoyment. Our senior class officers are focusing on fundraising proposals, senior t-shirt contests, and brainstorming for prom ideas and other upcoming events for the school year. We hope to see our senior class rock all of the activities that are being planned this year. Both teachers and students in our math classes are excited about our whiteboards being used for building thinking classrooms. In our AP Calculus class, we use the whiteboards during our class time to help us understand the rigorous, rigorous math better as well as help us study for our unit exams. My AP Calculus teacher, Mr. Shabber, loves the whiteboards and believes it is something that all math classes should have. These whiteboards have helped our students get up and have more group work opportunities for math classes, which for the most part do not have that many opportunities where you can have some type of group work. Unfortunately, our students are upset about the new implications on dress code. Many students are upset about the fact that they are not allowed to wear their durags and bonnets as well as their ha- them having to wear their IDs now. Lastly, our legal protective services shop will be volunteering at a trick-or-treat trunk event with the Maestro Police Department. They will be helping the police department by handing out candy while being dressed up in silly costumes.
Thank you for such an excellent report. Sounds really busy this month. All right, moving on. Um, audiences and communications. First up is 911 Project 351.
Hi, my name is Myrielle Lindsay and I'm a freshman. I came here to present and share my experience being a part of a 9/11 tribute service event under Project 351. On 9/11, I took part in a tribute service in honor of the tragic event that occurred on 9/11, 2000. I was joined by over 150 other ambassadors and alumni as well as elected officials, Gold Star families, and representatives of Mass- of Massachusetts Military Heroes Fund for some care packages, the troops abroad, and veterans experiencing homelessness, mental illness. This tribute service is held by Project 351. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization and youth-led movement for change. Each year, one student from each of the 351 cities of towns in Massachusetts is silently nominated and chosen to serve in the night for a year of service while representing their town. Together, we have positively impacted 1 million neighbors. Friends don't want 2023 to back away from Project 351. During this tribute service, it was meant to honor those who would have lost their lives as a result of 9/11. We've remembered the legacy that was left behind, and we comforted families by bringing light and recognition to the person they lost by individually honoring each 9/11 victim from Massachusetts. We gave back to our veterans who are still near us. During this event, we were able to assemble over 1,000 care packages for troops serving abroad and veterans experiencing homelessness. This included handbag and cards, hygiene products, handmade blankets, food items, and clothing items. This was such an amazing experience, and I am so grateful for the opportunity to serve back and give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your service in Project. That's incredible. All right, next up, Precision Machine STEM Project.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julius.
And I'm Andrew Maleka.
I'm Cole.
And together we actually, together and with the class, we actually made a go-kart. Mr. Maderos actually approached me. He asked me to come up with a project that would not only develop our minds, but to also combine the skills that we already have and to learn new ones. So I came up with a project to assemble a vehicle only using things that are in our shop. This project got us familiarized with different machines in our machine shop. From the CNC mills to the manual lathes, to different, getting used to different measurements and using math, engineering, problem solving. And I think that this project really benefited not only us, but to show other people outside of Southeastern that when you have, when you give kids a challenging project, and you also give them the skills required for that project and the minds for that project, they can really put together, you know, their capabilities to create something beautiful. Took us about a year and a half to build this project. And the main people who were involved in this project were myself, Andrew, Cole, and most of our shop. They did help here and there with the project, but we were the main machinists in this project.
Yeah, so we made an electric go-kart where we assembled everything from scratch. And we ordered parts online and we also machine parts. So it's not really planned, built, and we're planning to design a better go-kart. This was sort of a prototype. So we kind of had to engineer everything in our heads. Our teacher actually has designed product, um, designed, um, parts for the go-kart that would help it and make it look better, so.
Also, just to piggyback what, uh, what he said, this wasn't pre-planned. We had to, a lot of the challenges from this was the fact that we had to come up with this from scratch. And even though we did research a lot of existing go-karts, a lot of this was from scratch. We really had to, uh, this project really challenged our engineering minds from, uh, basically problem solving from day one, coming up with the design, the materials we were going to use, and different scenarios like that.
Uh, yeah, so we, um, remember the first time Julius approached us with it. He told us that, uh, that, uh, he was asked to, to come up with something and, uh, wanted to build a go-kart. So he did, uh, he's really the brains behind the operation. He did all the, he wanted the research. He came to us because he was new to the shop. He'd just come from engineering. So he came to us, we had a little bit more experience. So together, the three of us started working on the project. We had kids come in here and there, but, uh, in the end, we, the three that worked on it from the beginning for the past year and a half figured it was done.
For me, I will say that the most interesting part of this project was, again, the engineering process. You know, I came from engineering, so I already had this kind of in my mind, but I wasn't sure how to apply it in the real world. And this project really taught me how to do that. And, uh, I'm very grateful that I got to work on it because without this project, I don't think I would have been able to really have that full grasp of what the engineering process really looks like in the real world.
Yeah, and, um, the most, like, exciting part of the build was seeing, like, everything power on with the batteries and then just seeing the wheels spin and we were able to ride it. Just the most satisfying thing, seeing something that you built, um, be able to work.
Any questions, concerns?
Actually, I have, I have a question if you want to. Yeah, so, um, you had talked about it being really challenging to build this from scratch. Besides that, what was your biggest challenge, do you think, and, and how did you overcome that?
Me personally, this was my, when I parked, when I started this, uh, project, this was my first, uh, month in the shop. So I was very timid to ask questions. A lot of students have this problem where they feel like, um, asking a question may make them appear, uh, less intelligent. And I was a little afraid, but Mr. Maderos reassured me. He said, "The number one thing I want you to do in the shop is always ask questions." So after that, I wasn't afraid to ask these two gentlemen or the teacher for questions. And I think that the shop was very, had a very strong community in which we always helped each other, so, yeah.
It takes a lot of courage to ask questions in person, so good for you for working through that. Kelsey?
Are you guys going to have this on display for the open house and give presentations during that?
That is our, that is our plan, is to either have like a te- um, like a demo, like of just riding it and also showing it and answering questions on it.
I, I do have a little video. We'll see if it, oh, we'll see if it's.
Oh, nice. So is that going to replace one of our golf carts or? So are you guys going to build another one, you said, or that's the goal by the end of your senior year to finish it? Are you, your seniors are soon. Oh, perfect. So fresh in the air. You came in and started this project to now.
Yeah, so it took about a school year and a little bit of time.
What, uh, what was the most difficult thing for you in doing this project?
So the most difficult thing for me, like, in the part of the car was the brake assembly. We had to basically just engineer it from no plans. So I kind of took that in my own hands and kind of made up this, like, linkage off to the side because the brakes that came with it would not reach shaking foot, so we designed a handbrake. So I got to engineer that and mill it out and use a lot of different machines while also teaching freshmen. So, well, everyone kind of liked it.
That's excellent, yeah.
You all have done an excellent job. Teamwork is awesome. But I'm going to ask you the question that some of us probably won't ask, but, you know, for safety reasons, probably shouldn't ask, but I'm going to ask it anyway. How fast does it go? Because the way the teacher just went around. How fast does that go? I mean, that was fast.
About 15 miles an hour.
Really? Don't tell the SRO.
We have a seatbelt and we have.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Oh.
So and for everyone in the class, us three made a presentation and a test so that just drive, like, common knowledge for driving a kart, so everyone had to pass the test before they can drive it. So kind of an added safety measure so that people will know.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Barring objection, I'm going to go out of order. Oh, hold that thought. Okay, yeah, so we'll skip that. So we'll move on to 3C Communications.
So, um, at the end of September, um, we, we were actually sort of, right after school started, asked by the Association of Massachusetts School Equity Leaders, ANSEL, if we could assist in hosting, thank you students, um, assist in hosting, um, their retreat. It originally planned to be held, um, in Brockton and, and Brockton couldn't, um, couldn't host it. So we kind of scrambled at the last minute and hosted approximately 30 equity leaders from around the state. And we received this really lovely, um, note of appreciation. So I just wanted to share this publicly and publicly just thank our amazing, um, faculty, administrators, um, facilities folks, and culinary, culinary arts students who came together and really made this a wonderful event, um, for ANSEL. So just wanted to share that, that, that thanks publicly.
Well, thank you, Holly. All right, so I spoke too soon there. Um, so barring objection, I'd like to have two items out of order. The first will be 7A, which is Easton Smith Farm Outside Work Update. And then after that, we will talk about the access partnership with Brockton, and then we will resume the typical order. So 7A, we're going to, um, bring up Easton Smith Farm Outside Work Update.
Chris, Kevin? Chris Kelly and Kevin Eustace. Uh, Chris, if you could name your title.
I'm, I'm the floor advisor for Smith Farm.
Kevin?
Just a general contractor. I do the exterior work on my house and I'm doing a deck this month. So if any questions may regard the structure itself, so if anything I can help you with or explain it.
So when, when this was brought in front of you, I think it was, uh, back in the winter, maybe early spring, there was questions about some red highlighted items on the, on the blueprint. And those were meant as recommendations, not necessarily that the building was unstructurally sound and unsafe to work in. So that's the reason that, uh, that these two gentlemen are here today is to just confirm that the building is, you know, a good standing structure and it would be safe for us to work it. So that's why we're kind of presenting it back to you to grant the permission to carry on with the project and allow our students to work there. Uh, the proposed plan would be for carpentry, uh, plumbing, and HVAC to work on onsite and do the rehab.
Are there any particular ones of the attachments you think would be?
So what, this was the, um, plan with the proposals was the September 2022, I believe. Oh, no, sorry. This is the updated one without the red highlights. So there's no red highlights on this one, right here, April 22. So that's all, that's all practically the recommend, the recommended, um, you know, supports or improvements. But again, not that the, the building is structurally unsound and that's why these two gentlemen are here. Having worked on the property, uh, what was it, 1890 it's been since?
1880.
1880. So it is a structurally sound farmhouse, but we just wanted to, you know, bring it back in front of the board to get the approval to work on this project.
Chair, what's your estimated timeframe to, to complete this work?
Depends when we start.
Well, sure.
So, I mean, we, um, Mr. Armando, they, I mean, there's some, some corrections on the first floor. We talked about some access and egress for handicap, uh, some stairs that have to get kind of setbacks, there's enough clearance. So there is quite a bit of, of contracted work in there. As far as the plumbing, was a bath, a full bathroom upstairs, I believe, kitchen, half-bath, first floor?
I think it's just the first floor.
Just the first floor and a bathroom upstairs? So, I mean, it, a lot of it is really the construction work. I don't really see the plumbing being tremendous. I don't know that with us starting this late in the year, we probably wouldn't be able to start till, I would say, probably November, December. I don't think we would finish before June. It would probably carry on into the next school year. Um, I just, I don't see that happening by, by June.
Yeah, that was my wrong question.
Yeah, it's, just as we're, we're finishing the Beazel building right now, and that's been our priority, the siding and trim and everything on that. So once that, that building's sealed up and weathered tight and the plan was to be one percent. So it, it would probably carry on, I would say, at least a calendar year from the start there.
Any questions? Yes, Tristan?
Uh, there was a mention of, uh, of a grant. Does that, do we need to do anything about?
I'll have to defer back to Smith.
The T-Mobile hometown grant is it?
Yeah, so we applied for a grant from T-Mobile. We have not received it yet.
But you, you wouldn't need anything from the school committee to, to help with?
Uh, I, I think what might help is how much it might cost to do the work.
Yeah, we had. Yeah, we, we had, um, we might need some, some updated quotes on that. Uh, last year, we had HVAC and, and plumbing, give some tentative quotes based on the, on the scope of the work. But now saying that the second floor bathroom is going to not be first floor and that'll probably change some of the pricing, obviously. And then, you know, fluctuation of prices, I'm sure there's.
If you don't get this grant from T-Mobile yet. We have funds, but we probably don't have enough. We have to, you know, direct our attention to raising funds specifically for this part of the project.
Thank you.
So if you don't receive grant approval and you're looking to get funds, what would the timeline be for that, would you think? So it could be pushing things off.
Yeah, Marie Kelly, she's my wife, she's, uh, she works at Stone, actually. She's the expert in the funding, but I'm not, I'm not sure. It could be a while.
Okay. So we could either be doing this very soon if you receive the grant, or this is going to be, have to be tabled for when you're ready to.
It could be, yeah. So, uh, this, kind of the transitional point is getting approval that we can collaborate with you. Then we just have to lay out someone who's more, more concrete time, timelines.
Yeah, it's possible that we could break this into phases whereas, you know, the, the construction work being the basis, right, getting all the framing and everything where it has to be. And then, you know, having plumbing and then the HVAC coming after that. It might be that we just get proof of the carpentry at this point if the funding allows, or maybe get the grant and we can do the whole thing.
I mean, they're very happy to give it that.
Gotcha. Yes, um, and if this was already presented, let me, uh, it says, give the students training on historical, um, renovations as well, because don't, historical buildings fall under licorcent classification.
So there are some exemptions to the building code that will allow that to happen, but they will be able to see, this region is so inundated with old homes that you'll see stuff at Smith Farm that you would never see on like a new building. So if you had to repair something, um, it would, it would be a great opportunity. You might not get it yet. And the only other way would be like cutting your teeth on walking into an actual house that needs some new work. So it might be the first time seeing it, so.
The, the interior, the kind of structure is rough stuff.
Right, I saw those photos, so. But it is all like a historical renovation project where they're going to learn how to, like, that sensitivity around keeping it.
That was actually most of the confusion on the redlining was, wasn't really structural at all. Turns out the engineer was trying to meet the modern stretch codes, which require huge amounts of spray foam insulation. So he was expanding the rafters, um, and then he's putting like, it basically everything accommodated that new size for the headers and everything. So the old school rafters are like two-by-sixes, but they're old wood lumber, so they're like 40 range per inch instead of seven. That stuff's about as strong as like aluminum. It's incredibly different than modern wood. It's not far from just old growth. So the thing rocks solid. It, it didn't even bend in 2015 with the massive snow. Had no issues at all, so, um, maybe it's a little bit like cliche, but they don't build them like they used to. So there's no real issue walking into it.
Forgive me if I'm wrong speaking out of this context, but isn't the R value on that old wood lumber, uh, for the retention of like heat and cool?
Yes, because it has a high density. It is better, but lumber's going to give you like a max R6, R7. They're wanting like R60 now. It's, it's almost impossible. That's why windows by 2030, there won't be windows in houses by 2030. There'll all, there'll be LED panels that just show whatever you want them to show because we can't make the insulation code with windows. When you factor in U values. So by 2030, no new housing. There's one commercial residential window made by Anderson right now on the market that meets the current insulation code. Anything from Pella or Harvey, none of it makes the current codes. So, and they're going up every year. Once the stretch code kicks in, we're exempt from it because we're old, but anything modern going forward is, is going to be a brave new world. Or you can, if you want to call it.
No further questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, just one quick question. I make, this question may be for Leslie or Har- or even Jared. So if we were to use, is there enough students to do all the projects that we're thinking of? That's, you, you know where I'm going with this. Okay, all right.
And part of this too, you know, even with their funding, what we would do is remember they're, they're purchasing all the supplies.
Okay.
Right, we're just performing the labor and there's some charges for use of tools and things like that, meaning, uh, wearout of tools.
Okay.
Okay, but if, if they get into a place with the progress invoicing or they need funding, we can always pause it because we always have things in the back row that we can work on until it allows them. It actually, a project like this where it's, they're not fully funded, it's actually more helpful with everything that we have in front of us.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, what is the motion?
Oh, two seconds. I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, you guys would probably get a donation from either DeWalt or Milwaukee. All Massachusetts job sites in the next few years, supposed to happen a few years ago, are going to go cordless. So nail down that everything has to be electric. It can't be any air cords or any electric cords. Tell them that you're like training program. They'll probably donate a whole slew of bad guitar tools.
Go through DeWalt and.
Go through DeWalt, Milwaukee, literally right.
Wow.
Do the Milwaukee.
You like the Milwaukee?
So Tony, the recommended action is to move to approve the renovation of the Smith. So Tony, the recommended action is to move to approve the renovation of the Smith Farm farmhouse that borderlands State Park by Southeastern Rachel Students and instructors.
That's the motion. I'm just going to say so. Move. Second.
Tristan, second. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are moving on now to eight B, access partnership with Brockton.
I'd like to introduce Elvio Carrera, who is the Director of Career Technical Education at Brockton Public Schools. And just for way of background, Elvio and I and Leslie have been meeting probably every other week this year to discuss our SOR partnership and then to also think about ways in which we can support greater access to CTE, either here on our own campus or in partnership with Brockton. And so as part of that, Elvio submitted in one a very large grant to support expanding access to CTE and has a proposal for a partnership with us in terms of what we can do to help support that.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So as the superintendent was saying, the partnership is, it's not a, an expansion option for Brockton to introduce new programs. It's only expansion in our current four. If culinary, carpentry, graphics, and auto tech, we'd be allowed to expand those four programs moving forward. From the benefit department, obviously, you folks understand your enrollment and how things work. You have about 700 or so, 750 Brockton students looking to come to Southeastern for 250 spots. So that leaves about 500 students every year who enrolled and stay at Brockton, but are looking for career in technical education. This, this partnership would allow us the opportunity to give those students who don't end up at Southeastern and remain in Brockton, a chance to go through the educational process that they're looking for. Currently, we only have 80 seats in our programs in grade 10. This expansion would allow us to double that. So again, we're not reaching the 500 that don't, so if we get into Southeastern, but we would be doubling the opportunity for the students who are looking for this kind of education at Brockton High School.
And, and in terms of what you're asking from us is to help provide curriculum development support and?
Correct. So the partnership with Southeastern would be for your faculty to work with our faculty in developing curriculum, looking at our current facilities, our current space equipment, advisory board options, and frameworks from the state level, really helping us mature our programs so that they're more robust and offer the students who are at Brockton High School a greater opportunity. We don't have the benefit of the scheduling that Southeastern has or the problematic situations, the experiences that your instructors bring to the table. So the partnership would be for, for your faculty and staff to really work with us to benefit the students at Brockton High School who again are looking for this type of education but don't have the opportunity to get a CTE. Also a great benefit to Southeastern from your perspective, because you would be the model, you would be the flagship for all of the other districts moving forward who have access to situational, for lack of a better word. And you can show the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a resolution on how to work with your sending districts and do what is best for students to accomplish.
Uh, hold on. I just lost it. It had to do with, oh, do we have the faculty that's interested in doing this kind of cross training and helping out? And what was the reason that our SOR program was not as successful as we hoped?
Well, as Elvio mentioned, one of the issues has been around schedule. So we have a very, very different schedule here than Brockton is able to accommodate. We have the week on, week off for vocational and, and, you know, and with, to know, with no one's fault, it's just that there's a lot less flexibility in Brockton Public School and Brockton High School to flex the schedule so that students are not starting at Brockton High School at seven in the morning, seven thirty in the morning and going all the way to six o'clock at night here. We've tried various things and, you know, Elvio certainly has been involved in those conversations, but at the end of the day, they're unable to do that. And for most teenagers to go to school from seven something in the morning until six o'clock at night, to not be able to participate in your extracurriculars, and to not really be at home in either Brockton High School or here, right, has proven to be overwhelming. So persistence in the program has been incredibly low. Attendance is low. We're struggling this year, to be quite honest with you, with transportation to get the students here. So there are a lot of issues around why the SOR program, as it was conceived, is not, is not working.
The grant, so you, you're abiding and you receive the grant. Does the grant cover the cost of our faculty and staff being involved on that? Is there any cost sharing from Southeastern Regional?
Yes, we did build in stipends for faculty members both at Brockton and Southeastern to work collaboratively on different topics.
So what, what's the anticipated time requirement that you're thinking about from our faculty and staff?
Realistically, in hours, probably looking at somewhere between 20 and 30 hours a year.
A year? A ye- oh, yeah. And we have staff that's interested in the help?
Well, I mean, as you said, there's stipends available for it. And typically, when we have put out curriculum development stipends and things, we do have staff who are interested. I will also say that we have historically partnered very well with other school districts who are looking for assistance with developing curriculum. You know, I think most vocational schools feel very, feel a strong sense of partnership and, and think it's important to support one another. So it's not an unusual situation. I can't guarantee that anyone would want to do it, but if there's a stipend available, usually someone will say that's, you know, that's worth my time.
Madam, Madam Chair? Quick question?
Yeah?
Is this a, going to be a named partnership? That is, is this, this is going to be Brockton slash Southeastern?
Or Trinity Brother?
Yeah. I'm just wondering.
It's not necessarily like the SOR program where we have this formal arrangement. It's not quite that. It's really more of a support where, as opposed to us having, you know, a form of partnership that, especially I see it as us being.
Yeah. Most of the expectations would be behind the scenes kind of things where there isn't anything formal where there would be ceremonial items or.
Okay.
So would you call it more like a consulting kind of arrangement?
Yeah, it's definitely a collaborative approach between two districts.
From mining and construction, graphics, and what are the other two?
Our programs, carpentry, graphics, culinary, auto tech.
And auto tech. And you already have current students enrolled into those programs.
They're not full chapter 74 programs, correct?
They are. Full four.
They are?
Yeah, full chapter 74 program, full four. Yeah.
So I see here that there's action and discussion, but no vote, so.
Well, I think, I think I click action and discussion in case you wanted to take a vote to approve us moving forward.
Okay.
So, you know, from my perspective, and I, I don't, Leslie, if you have anything else you want to?
No, I, I think that, like Elvio said, it does show good faith effort. I mean, we are trying, we know, we don't like having so many students on the waiting list as well. And I think that there's a lot to be said on assisting Brockton and, and our teachers are always willing to help. So I, I don't even think money's going to be that big of an issue, because when you talk about it, it's just even the scope and sequence. And it's also good for our teachers to see some of the struggles that other schools are having with, you know, to remind them how good they have it as well, you know? But just even when, when do you teach what, at what time throughout a student's exploratory? You know, what do you, what is the proper thing to ask for for equipment needs? You know, where are some of your ideas to get tool donations? Like, you know, you have things, we're wealthy in people suggesting things to us. And that's things that we could, you know, communicate, how you ask your suppliers for donations. Sometimes the wood that you're using for framing is no longer good. That's a great donation opportunity for Brockton Public Schools. And anyone living in the surrounding area would be open to that. I mean, there's ways that are rounded that our teachers could assist and build a strong CTE program at Brockton High by just sharing some of the inputs. That, you know, when you're only four programs, here vocational teachers have a unity. There's 21 programs and, and close to 70 instructors, right? At Brockton High, Elvio might have 10, right? So they don't have, you know, the same amount of support that our teachers have.
We're talking about 250 students?
Yep.
Southeastern accepts 250 students.
On the average.
Hundred, hundred and eighty. So they have 80 kids enrolled now. It would double this grant to 100, roughly 180 students, 160.
For Brockton?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would go to, our, our grade 10 numbers would go from eight to about 160.
Wow.
So now, I just have a question about the way your program's structured. So they do their academic courses for eight hours or seven hours morning and then they go into these shops, or are those shops part of?
Everything is built.
So you guys have like a semi tree school currently?
It's a waterfall scheduled like you used to do in academics.
Got it. Okay. Andy?
Yeah, I was just going to ask how the schedule's set up, because I know the SOR program, that was one of the scheduling issues. So what do these students' days look like? Like here, it's one week of academics, one week of shop. How does Brockton High handle that?
So our students have academics and CTE every day. So for our seniors, they, they're in their academics with sixth period and primary school. They're in their academics one, two, three, four. They're in shop five, six. Our freshmen have exploratory one period, they're in academics one, two. They go to shop three, and they go to academics four, five, six. Sophomores and juniors, the sophomores have it once a day at period one, so in CTE period one and then academics the rest of the way. The juniors have two classes. They have shop time and a theory related period. So their shop time is two and then their theory is four. Thank you.
Tristan?
We haven't had a chance to meet yet, but I'm the chair of Brockton High. I teach the, I'm the bilingual department. So how would this, and that, one of the big things that we've been discussing within the bilingual department is how can our students that in the ELL programs have access to some of these programs, right? I know it's, it's a little bit difficult because the, our kids have to take extra classes. So it kind of makes it a little bit, a little bit more difficult for them, but so I was wondering if you guys had put any thought into figuring out how can you also access some of the ELL students?
So at Brockton High School, the, the process is, is open to all?
Right.
And any student who is in grade eight can apply to the Brockton, this grade nine school program?
Yeah, but the thing is, so for some of my students, I teach mostly, well, this year I have freshman, two freshman courses and two junior senior courses, but some of my junior seniors that are newcomers, they'll be excluded from some of these programs.
So they, right, because of the state regulations, they couldn't necessarily get into the CTE programs, but this particular partnership also allows us to have introductory programs. So we would have non-CTE carpentry programs that a student coming in at grade 11 and 12 could still take, but not be part of the full blown CTE program. We have the same role model. Culinary is only in its first year, but we have food and nutrition. That's an elective class that the students could take for a few years. And graphics is the exact same way. We have a graphic experience program that the students are exposed to some of the frameworks, but they don't have the same amount of time in the shops to get the same exposure. But this would just add to those opportunities for students who might come in beyond a grade nine, 10 scenario, or who are in Brockton proper and maybe don't want the full blown CTE experience, but want introduction. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? So my question for you, Holly, is would there be an issue if we decided to postpone the vote till our next meeting? Because there, I think there's, there's a lot of complexity to it. I mean, just to be thinking about it. And I, I didn't know if it made sense for us to just have some time to chew on it for a little bit. You know, I'm, I'm open to a motion if, if somebody feels comfortable with that, or we can try tabling this or not postponing the vote until our next meeting to give us some time.
I'm inclined to do a motion that we accept the access partnership with Brockton, but it's, it impacts a great number of students there. We've talked about doing a satellite in Brockton. For me, this is a no brainer. Good job on the presentation. Only thing that I would have done differently, I would have had something written out for us to read it, to the chair's point, because that's why you kind of want to digest it. But just looking at this, listening to the presentation and the great questions that everybody has asked, I'm inclined to motion that we act, that the access partnership with the Brockton district be our will.
A second motion.
Thank you.
All the kids should. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take this to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
All right, we're going to be moving back into our regular order now for A, public announcements.
All right. So every year at the beginning of the school year, we acknowledge employees who have worked here and other members of our community who have been here five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years. And it came to our attention today that we missed a five year anniversary. And that is for a member of this school committee, Mr. Tony Branch.
Oh, no. Oh. I'm looking over here. Oh, thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Tony's actually been on the committee for seven years.
Yeah.
You have to be cool and put it on your line, yes?
Oh.
That's right. It's pretty cool.
Yes.
Any other public announcements? Okay, so we'll move on to.
Christina, if I may, I do have a public announcement.
Okay.
Tomorrow, there is a Southeastern football and cheer fundraiser at Brex Grilling, Taffin, Brockton, put on by the football and the cheer club, obviously. So if anyone can make it, the donation's a 20%. It would be greatly appreciated by the football and the cheer team.
Is it just the Brockton store or the time store?
I believe it's just Brock, everyone was forwarded today.
What is the location item?
Brockton. Brex Grilling.
Lots going on over there in the suite.
Excellent. Thanks for.
I believe it is just Brockton. Sorry for the interruption.
All right.
That's a good announcement.
Public announcement, right? All right. Moving on to four B, conferences, conventions, and meetings.
So you see the schedule of events there, obviously. We're just a few weeks out from our NEASC accreditation visit and you should have received your formal invitations today. So we are looking forward to that and hope that all of you can, can join us for those festivities. And then, of course, we have our open house on the number 18. So that is going to be a traditional open house this year where we are, the doors are open and anyone who wants to attend can come. And so hopefully that will alleviate some of the parking and other sort of night, traffic nightmares that we've had the last couple of years. So certainly hope that you can be there for that as well.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'm going to initiate a motion for that.
It's still in here, it's the 29th, being parent teacher night. It's on the 30th.
Oh, yes. So we have moved parent teacher night to the 30th of November.
What is parent teacher night? It's not the conferences, right? Oh, it's, okay. It's, I would, it's, okay, yes.
Is that like, did you guys, when my parents would come for the report cards?
Exactly.
Yep. Oh, yes.
So if I show up, yeah.
It's like a roller coaster.
There you go.
Okay, now we're officially moving on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, I guess.
Second, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, eyes have at seven zero. I do want to thank two businesses. Um, the first is El Mariachi Restaurant in Southeastern, who donated a variety of food items for the student council. And then the other one was a donation of a variety of items from Tractor Supply of Taunton for the carpentry program. So thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Well, that's actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quite jealous, actually.
Moving on to number six, financial report and A, the treasurer's cash report.
Hello.
Hello.
I haven't seen you also.
Yeah.
So this is the treasurer's cash report for July thirty-first, uh, being presented tonight. You'll see on the second page is the cash flow chart, a summary of the financial position. Brought that back, we lost it for a few months there, but it's back now. And then the next page is just the cash flow itself, which picks that with an ending cash balance of eleven million, eight, eight, eight for the year end. Then on the next page, you'll see the gross payrolls, year-to-date, run about three point nine, those are the payrolls through nine-nine. That was the first pay of twenty-twenty-four for the returning teachers. Then the cash reconciliation page is next. There are nothing really to report other than the usual outstanding checks for the different checking accounts, accounts payroll, payroll, and student activity. Now, there's a couple of adjustments we have to do in the bank and the G L, but feeling it looks pretty good. Took a while to get June done, so I promised I will have two months of cash reports for your next month. You'll have August and September, and then we'll be back on track. Uh, the next page is the budget revenue. Uh, you see what we're expecting from the communities, total twenty-two million. And then the regional transportation and chapter seventy numbers are at the top of the page. At this point, the assessments don't get paid until September first, so you don't see them posted yet. And you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions right there?
I don't know, it's pretty good ahead of us.
I've done a terrible job of this in the past, so I'm gonna make sure I do this. I need to entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's cash report, I always forget that, so.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, who is that?
Either one.
Okay, doesn't matter, all right.
Fifteen minutes.
All right, let's take a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, eyes have at seven zero, thank you. Next up is six B, assistant superintendent of finance and administrations report.
Good evening.
Mark?
Thanks, you'll find our appropriated budget report. If you have any questions, but you want to go to the last page and all the, all the good stuff.
We're going to nine?
So, uh, we, we're at this point, we have, we have eighty-five percent of our budget still available. So year-to-date, we spent, uh, what do we have there, four million, six forty-four oh eighty-eight, leaving us thirty-one million, nine thirty-one, six ninety-two still available in the operating budget. And we also have our revolving funds, balances, and those carry forwards, these carry forward from one year to the next. So again, you have your balance, any expenditure, the recumbrances, and then your budget balance in the last call. Some of those you see in the negative, that's because projects are underway in some of these different areas and the revenues haven't come in yet. Again, so those will be coming in shortly. But you'll see there are a couple of accounts in the negative, but again, those will be taken care of as the revenues come in. So for instance, the food concession trucks, the costs were expended, but as the season goes on, that money comes back in and the revenue will come back into that account.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just for members of the public, so when you just said a negative balance, that is, you're not saying we have a deficit?
Overall, no, overall, overall, we're in the black.
Okay, thank you.
But some accounts are running, again, behind, and that's only due to timing, due to revenue and expenses coming in. So it's the food truck, they purchase all their needs upfront, but they run one night, two nights a week throughout the season. By the end of the season, then you'll see that be replenished.
Thank you.
As the length of sold and sessions are in place. But overall, again, if you take that balance, we're in a positive balance.
Ready for the questions? Jerse.
Mark had a question, so, um, going back to Tony's deficit question in a way. Uh, so in Brockton, are they implementing what the city side uses, the MUNIS system?
Okay.
Which alerts, uh, I guess it alerts them if they're getting too close to, gives them a percentage, I guess. Maybe if they're getting too close to the, the limits.
Limits.
Yeah, could be, let's say if it's twenty-five percent, that gives, that's an AI where twenty-two percent of the, of the budget for the allocated. Do we have something similar, you know?
So we use Infinite Visions, which is actually owned, Tyler Technology owns Infinite Vision and MUNIS. Infinite Visions is just more of a Windows-based user-friendly. So I'm not sure exactly what Brockton has, but in our system, I can set limits to each account line, which is there. So, and administrators here can speak, that if they were to go to put in a requisition and their line was, is gonna put them in the negative, it won't allow that requisition to go through. It gives them a warning, so they, lets them know. So then that's when I get a phone call and, what happened or why can't I? So that sometimes we have to take a look, sometimes we have offsets that need to be made from one line to another. Again, these happen throughout the year. You may think you need a hundred thousand dollars for textbooks and lo and behold, you only used fifty, but now you want to buy some supplies with that fifty thousand, and then that's where we'll do the offset from the textbook line to the supply line. So, but there are limits in place that don't allow users to put in requisitions above their budget balance. So you have that.
You may also be getting reports out of MUNIS that say like, it's three months of the year over, you want to make sure you're on twenty-five percent used and not forty percent used, then, then you won't make it. So that's why I think they'll probably give you each department a report that says that.
Yeah, because I, I think that was, they're probably one of the issues that they were having before, but now with this, coming from what the city wants them to implement is this MUNIS system, they can be more on the site. And that was one of the things I picked up that they had, but now they would get an alert saying, hey, you are at this percentage or you're gonna be over, I just wanted to make sure to see if we have.
Since I've been here, we've had that option and it's been in place. And if you go back to the appropriated budget, each one of those budgets are broken down by department. So you can see their line and the total budget for each department.
Any further questions? All right, well, thank you, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
So we're moving now to old business, seven B, building committee update.
All right. So, um, I think the last time we met, we notified the school committee that our filed sub bids and our general bids had come in well above budget, um, so we did formally reject the bids. Um, the last building committee meeting, um, we discussed and we are currently moving forward with architectural designs to split the project into two phases. The first would be building the outside exterior shell of the building, which we would do through a general contractor to design big process, big build process. Um, and then we would take on phase two through our vocational programs. So our students would, um, do the electrical work, any minor plumbing work, any minor HVAC work. It's not a ton of that, it's mostly electrical, um, inside. That being said, there would be a cost to us for the materials to do that work. Um, a lot of those materials could be carried as instructional materials in the budget, but still a lot. So, um, at this point, we are waiting until probably December for those additional design drawings to be done. And at that point, we're gonna have a better sense of what the material cost to us could be. And, um, so at, at that point, we would have, we're gonna have to make a decision about whether or not we believe that we can support those material costs through our general operating budget. So that is pretty much it in a nutshell. We do recognize we're taking a little bit of, of risk, um, in terms of us pursuing these architectural designs. There are costs to the district for that, um, but there's a four million dollar grant on the line. And so I think it's, it's worth, um, the investment if there's any way that we can make it, make it happen. Um, so that's, that's basically, I don't know, if Andy or.
Yeah, we just basically hit on everything that we have going right now. I mean, obviously, we're still, still concerned even with the outside shell because you do need to put the rooftop units up there for HVAC and that's where some of the big cost and big lead time items work. Yes, our students can do the inside stuff, but they can't run cranes, they can't, you know, hoist things and stuff like that. We're hoping for the best and we'll see what they come in with in December. And we do have to go out to bid again if I'm not.
We would have to go out to bid in January, um, but, you know, the, the designer and the opium have both advised us that trying to go back out to bid right now doesn't make sense that, you know.
The holidays, a lot of vacations.
Isn't there a lot of slowdown in the industry anyways?
And that's where a lot of vacations, a lot of holidays come in, so that does complicate.
We still have the possibility that we could get somebody else to bid again when we go back out.
Yes.
Um, can you remind me again, what is our deadline to spend a certain percentage of the grant or is it all?
The deadline to spend the grants is June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so we have time. And in, I know we talked about adding another year, if we have the students do the work to the completion of the project. In that time, do we have enough to finance for fluctuations in the cost of things and materials?
Well, that's what we really have to wait on, is see what the estimate is for the material costs and then build in some sort of escalation around.
Yeah, without knowing that, again, that's where, we're in the unknown right now. We're very tight with the budget and so that price is really gonna make the difference.
Yeah, like four million dollars is a lot, but, you know, if we have.
And Mark will not tell us what inflation will be next year.
I know you don't.
I'd do better than that, I'd do the winning numbers for tomorrow.
Tonight, isn't it?
Was it tonight?
No, Wednesday.
No.
Monday, last night, tomorrow, Monday, Wednesday.
Yeah, today feels like Wednesday. All right, so next up is, um, a presentation on MCAS with Katie Tuchanelli.
So I just want to show you that for whatever reason, the, the screen keeps dropping. So Katie has handed you, um, paper copies of her presentation. Um, so if all of a sudden it goes blank, I'll try and bring it up.
So I was trying to concern paper, it's not the entire presentation in there. What you do have are the first three slides of our MCAS data and then you have the MCAS data from your own sending district. So if there's something in the middle, um, that it goes off and you need to ask questions or stop me anytime because there's a lot of information here. Okay, so tonight we are going to cover our MCAS scores from twenty-twenty-three. We're gonna talk a little bit about our English language learners, their access scores and how they did on MCAS. Our AP scores, our accountability rating and review, comparison by sending districts and what we're doing to move forward. So I have a tendency to speed up, if you need me to slow down, I'll just let me. So for our MCAS scores, I have the twenty-twenty-two in the top left and then the twenty-twenty-three in the bottom right. So you could start to see what we're building. So in twenty-twenty-two, fifty-eight percent of our students were meeting or exceeding on the ELA MCAS, which was actually an anomaly for the state where most schools last year went down in ELA, we went up. Um, and then in twenty-twenty-three, we retained the fifty-eight percent meeting or exceeding, but we boosted up to seven percent in exceeding expectations, which was great for us. We do have twenty-three students who were not meeting expectations, but forty percent of those twenty-three are multilingual learners, which is an area of focus for us. So they are students that have not been here for the six years that DESI asks for English proficiency, but they still are required to take the English MCAS exam. So we've changed, um, we've seen a change in the population in that area. For math, last year we talked a lot about math. In twenty-twenty-two, only thirty-three percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations. But in twenty-twenty-three, I'm happy to report forty-four percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations, which is a huge jump for us. Um, we do have students that are not meeting expectations, but fifty-nine percent of those students are students with disabilities. So what we've really tried to do in the, the areas of students who are not meeting expectations is try to figure out what's the largest population and how can we make sure we're addressing their needs. In science, in twenty-twenty-two, last year was the first year for the next-gen science test. So when I presented to you last year, we talked about science scores in terms of being advanced, proficient, uh, meeting improvement or failing, but they've converted the scores. So in twenty-twenty-three, or I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, only thirty-five percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations when they converted the scores from the, the former MCAS ratings. But in twenty-twenty-three, fifty-eight percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations and we've looked up to seven percent of our students exceeding expectations. Of the students who are not meeting expectations, again, sixty-six percent of them are students with disabilities, so another area of focus for us. And this one is interesting, I tried not to drill down, um, to all the very specifics, but we did have four teams test in biology and three teams test in physics. And we saw strong scores in both subjects because we internally talk a lot about what's best for our students, but our students are doing well on both physics and biology. So our students also tested last year on the access test, our multilingual learners. The access test happens between mid-January to early February and we set the testing window. In twenty-twenty-two, we had sixty-two students test and we had seventeen exits come out of that testing, um, which means that they have met the composite literacy score of a four point two, so that they no longer have to be in an English learner program. They graduate to former English learners, but we monitor them for four years. So if they need to come back into the fold of English learners, we can always invite them back in. And in twenty-twenty-three, we tested seventy-six students, we had twenty-four exits and fifty-nine students increased in their composite, their composite literacy scores. So also in terms of SGP for our English learners, um, we had an SGP of fifty percent, the student growth percentile for ELA and the state's SGP for English learners in ELA was only forty-two percent. Our math students had an SGP of forty-seven percent for our English learners and the state, um, average was forty percent. And in science, they don't do SGP because it's an end-of-the-year test, so they don't have multiple years to compare data from. But our average score for our English learners in science was a four eighty-nine and the state, state's average score was a four seventy-seven, so we're trending above average in that area. And, um, I've had a lot of our English language learners stop by my office recently in the past few days and ask if they've passed, and they're getting their scores back, they're no longer embargoed. So I am thrilled to see them there, I'm thrilled to tell them that they are successful. So it's been a really joyful few mornings being able to talk about their scores with them.
Hang on, let me just bring it up. While you're bringing that back up, Katie?
Yes.
Are any students taking MCAS alt?
We are looking into it for some new students that came to our district. In terms of getting their CD, we are doing cohort appeals. We've been successful with cohort appeals, mostly through science, and we're waiting to apply for the ELA math um, as soon as I get the information back from our data, um, person. But our special ed director is working with the MCAS alt and looking for a small group of students that we try to come into the district.
So if you had students who were doing MCAS alt, I'm just trying to understand, like, what kind of supports do they need in the, um, on the VOTEC side to be able to do well in their vocation? But then at the same time, they're taking in MCAS alt, which for some students won't even give them a diploma. So I'm trying to understand that.
So we haven't gotten a route of alt yet. Like I said, she has one or two that have come into the district that we've identified. Um, but the support that they get in their vocational area is provided by a special education teacher and then we have another paraprofessional that's helping her this year. So last year was really the first time that we had a special education teacher really just devoted to the vocational areas. And she is, I mean, she's a magician, she does a wonderful job, but we did get her support this year so that she can direct a paraprofessional who is also going to school, um, for a similar track to be able to help those students as well. But it is something that we're monitoring and we watch carefully. And the vocational supervisors do a really great job in assisting the teachers to make sure they have what they need also.
All right, thank you.
So we're, we're doing the cohort appeal and we're also, we pay teachers over the summer to create, um, performance-based appeals. So we have the models to use for, um, the math, the physics, and the biology for, uh, the portfolio appeal should we need to go back. So the next shows are AP scores. And I think it's really important when we talk about testing to kind of talk about all the testing we do because sometimes we only focus on MCAS, but we have a very robust AP program. So in an AP score, the range is between a one and a five. And if you are a five, you are out of this world, like doing post-secondary work. Um, when I used to teach AP, I would say my students would walk in fives and it was my job not to, not to get them or mess them up, but they, um, five is really the top. But generally, a three or higher will get you college credit depending on where you're applying to go to college. So our students, um, have been participating in the AP program. We have very strong scores in our English courses and we also introduced two new courses last year. One was physics and I point this out because our percent of, um, three or higher is six percent. I caution us though to jump, um, to conclusions because in the land of AP, they teach AP teachers, it really takes you three years for you to understand exactly what the course is asking of you as a teacher and also you as a student. And what our teachers have to do is then mold what the college board gives them and make it work in an A and B schedule, which I can assure you is not easy. Trying to fit that content and not have lapses while the students are in vocational area is, is a challenge. Um, on the flip side though, we also had a second new class last year, the AP seminar class, where those students came. where those students came in and they presented for you. And that class is really literacy-based where the students do research and they do the presentation and then they have the multiple choice test. Ninety-one percent as grade ten students achieved a three or higher. So we really have, you can see the, the duality of our scores in those two items. Does anyone have any questions about MCAS access or AP?
And we, we have no barriers to participation in AP.
No, no. And I, as someone that looks at all the scores and Ms. Trin is our AP coordinator, I love it too because what that shows me is that we are not gatekeeping and we have students that are participating in the rigorous coursework, but they may not get the qualifying score, but they get the access to the curriculum. And I used to have students that sometimes really just were poor test takers and they'd go to college and they maybe would test out through a different means. But it too really shows me that our access and our accessibility is true and real and that we're not gatekeeping students from those experiences. So the next part of the presentation is really about Desi's accountability system. So in 2018, this probably is familiar to you. They rolled out this accountability system where a lot of it is MCAS and achievement-based. However, it's supposed to give schools ways to look at themselves through a lot of different measures. We haven't seen it since the pandemic, but this is the first year it's come back for us. So in our accountability score, achievement in ELA math and science is worth forty percent of our score. Student's growth percentile is worth twenty percent. And again, that only comes from math and English because STE doesn't have student growth percentile. We're judged on our high school completion rate for twenty percent. So how many of our students from that base cohort group that come in in grade nine get through within four years or they're still actively engaged in our district? Or they are, if they've dropped out, we are accountable for that too. We're judged on the progress toward obtaining English proficiency. So how many of our students are able to pass or get that four point two on the access test within six years? And the additional indicators that we are judged on as a district are chronic absenteeism, which means missing more than ten percent of your days in membership. So if you're a student who goes to school here the full year, if you miss more than eighteen days, you're considered chronically absent. And that has fluctuated in the last few years because the commissioner has said, well, it can be twenty percent during the pandemic. And then we had another year where it was again twenty percent, but it has dropped down to the ten percent again. And we're judged on advanced coursework. And the CTE community really pushed to make sure advanced coursework includes things like co-op in our articulations, but it also includes our AP classes and our dual enrollment classes. So this is our accountability score. So our accountability results, at first when we see data, I think it's probably natural. I'm like, oh, my goodness, we didn't get four in this category or that category. But when we put it all together, I'm incredibly proud of the work that we've done. So we are scored in where it says, where it says points earned in the left-hand column. We don't have any zeros. We don't have any ones. A two means that we made progress, but we're below the target that Desi set for us. A three means that we met the target that Desi set for us. And a four means that we exceeded the target. So our average score is a seventy-three percent. A seventy-five percent would have met that we met the target that Desi set for us. So seventy-five percent is really that golden number that gets you into, instead of substantial progress towards targets, it gets you to meeting the targets. But we were really very close. You'll notice too, on the right-hand side, the lowest performing students categories are blank. So no high schools in the state of Massachusetts have a lowest performing student category this year. So normally, or in years past, I guess I can't say normally, the lowest performing students were twenty-five percent of the total criteria and reference rate, but there isn't a cohort this year. So we have our lowest performing students is a little bit different than sending districts like yours because other districts, students have to be enrolled for two full years to be able to be identified on the lowest performing students list. But our students are never enrolled here for two full years before they test. We have students testing in grade nine and students testing in grade ten. So they, we are on a different model, or we were on a different model. So when I reached out to the department to ask what our lowest performing group would be comprised of for the coming year, they told me that they do not know and I should email them again in November. So I will, just to really understand what that means for us and how our lowest performing students are targeted because they're twenty-five percent of this accountability score. So if they're counted after the test, it's very different than a district that gets a list of students and they know, like, I have to target these forty students because they're going to carry twenty-five percent of our accountability score. And then if we are just given the list after we, we've tested, it's not, it's not the same. So we do provide support and make sure that our students have what they need, but it just is a different model. So as soon as I know more, I will update the superintendent. So we don't have to go through all of these. I included them in your packet. So you have our information and then the information from your spending district. I know there was a request for this. I can give you a minute to look at it and see if you have any questions. You have both the accountability scale and you'll see from your spending districts, it has information from the high school level, which doesn't have a lowest performing group, but it also has their non-high school group, which does have a lowest performing level.
Katie, I have some, a couple of questions. So based on receiving these results and everything, have you formulated goals for the team as far as what you want to see happen next year?
As far as like numbers or?
Data.
So I think our goal is always that we're, you know, trending forward. But what's difficult for, for me is that they're different students. So I think that we can, well, we don't have the goal that we're setting, but for me, the SGP rests really, really heavy because that's the, the impact that we've had on our students in the two years that we've had them or the one year we've had them before they take the test. So I really like looking at the SGP because these are cumulative tests. They don't learn all of these skills within the time that they're with us. So I would like to see and make sure our students with disabilities that we are getting their SGPs higher. We do have some, we had a decline in Hispanic students in certain populations, making sure that we're addressing what they need within that community. So those are two focus areas for, for us. But the goal is to continue on with making sure our students are still getting grade level material, that we're providing them high-quality instruction. And then the other piece is the superintendent's plan is push for a culture of belonging. So we went to an equity conference, was it last week? The week before, it's blending a little bit. But the presenter from Harvard was talking about how when you're creating a culture of belonging, it can take years for the culture of belonging to fit within the classroom before you see the actual results of the test. And that doesn't mean that we are not like working really hard on scope and sequence and making sure that our students, like the alignment of curriculum is intact. But for me, it's hard to pinpoint an exact number because I think there are so many pieces that come into play. I don't know, maybe that was.
Yeah, so I guess, so I think you're probably anticipating why I'm asking these things. I mean, one of the things that we're doing for superintendent is, is giving her goals, right? And I believe it's important for us to give reasonable goals, but data-driven goals. So, you know, it sounds like having numeric goals around SGP would be the best way to accomplish things. And then the other way I thought about it is do we look at the, kind of the general accountability results and say, we need to exceed seventy-five percent or whatever it is? I mean, would you, do you see those as reasonable areas to form goals around for, for this?
I think the accountability is a much more reasonable way to go because it's the entire school. I, I, we saw that big jump in math, eleven percent. So what I know we are going to have next year is a much higher goal. Like, oh, you had this group of students and you made them jump eleven percent. But now you're getting this group of students make them jump thirteen percent, and those are not the same kids. So what I really appreciate about the accountability is that it, it does include SGP in there. It does include achievement, but it's school-wide. Everyone in our community has an impact on whether or not our students are coming to school or if they're confident enough to challenge themselves with rigorous coursework. And I think that, for me, that's a much better indicator of how we're doing as a school because scores can shift. We saw a few years ago, there was sort of a role question on MCAS and how they scored it was, was different. So I think accountability is, especially coming from the view of the superintendent, a school-wide approach.
Right, so there's that part of it. But then there's also the part of it where we're trying to work with the English language learners and we're trying to work with students with disabilities. And that's not really encompassed in that piece. So how would you create goals that would focus on those populations that would be fair? Like as you mentioned, right, that you're not comparing the same group of kids? And then also, you know, and, and I, I understand exactly what you're saying about inclusion taking time, right? And so you might not see that reflected in scores for years, right? But what can we do now? Like what, what kind of accountability can we put in now to try and make sure that these populations of students are being focused on and that we're really watching them grow in their scores?
So next year, we will have that call on the lowest performing students. And I'm not sure if it's a one-year or a two-year goal, but that could be the baseline. Or we can look at the SGP and the achievement of this year as the baseline for those communities and build there. And I know, you know, it's a, it's a goal for the superintendent, but we all work so hard on all of these things. So I think that using what we have in those two areas and then building upon it is, is reasonable. Also, perhaps taking into account, we can look at their, their benchmark data when they came, something like that, so that it's not solely just a two-day test and then it's, it's done. I don't know if that makes it too sticky.
Yeah, but you know, I, I agree with you because Holly's goals are my, if any, was your goals, right? And that's why I'm asking you, right? Because I don't want for us to come up with some crazy plan and then have you feel all that pressure too and then be like, this is not achievable. I mean, we want to do something that's achievable, but we also want to strive for excellence always and improvement always. And you do too. I know that.
What the counterbalance is too is that we're trying really hard, I can get there in a minute, with our inclusive practices to focus a lot on classroom dynamics and activity in the classroom. And as our student representatives spoke to earlier, the building thinking classrooms and that active learning. So what is difficult in a position like mine is coming to teachers and saying like, your MCAS scores look like this. But I want you to have them as students. I really want you to make sure that they're part of the class. So those two things, we know that, that the active learning will build that. But that also becomes, I, as a teacher, I would be like, well, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to, to drill them and, you know, make sure they're ready for the test? Or do you want me to do this? So I think, I'm really not giving you good answers, but that.
No, but we need to, we needed to hear from you.
Because I think if they're, if they're multi-year goals, you have a chance to really show growth through time. But just to say like, I expect achievement to jump three points in the next year on ELA achievement for students with disabilities feels like, and we're just kind of pulling it out of thin air.
So Kelsey, I know.
So do you think it's an unattainable goal to hit the seventy-five percent mark on the accountability scale by next year?
The reason I hesitate is because we, we don't know what they'll do with the lowest percentage of students. Because if that's twenty-five percent, that doesn't just change it for us. It changes it for schools across the state. So where we're looking at seventy-three, next year, we might be looking at like fifty-three because a quarter of our, because the lowest performing students are part of the whole and then they're a quarter of the entire thing. So until we know and we have an answer for, from Desi of how they're calculating that, I think it's really hard to say what the score could look like. I think you could look at the indicators in the accountability scale and say, especially like the, the SGP goals, like how do we meet the state's target for SGP? How do we meet that? And if you, I don't have it in here, but if you look at the accountability on the website, you can go fine-tune it to every single subgroup. And there's either a path forward, which means that we've already found our way back to where we were in 2019 and we're moving forward, or it's a recovery path, which means we haven't quite gotten back to where we were in 2019. So maybe, maybe getting back to what our goal was in 2019 feels right. And I don't mean to keep seesawing, but the other thing that's very different for us is our population keeps changing. So this year with our incoming freshman class, we have forty English learners. That's ten percent of our freshman class, which is very different than when we had two percent come in a few years ago. Because they're expected to take the tenth grade MCAS test if they, you know, and they haven't been here for some of them three years and take that proficiency test that students that have lived here their whole life are expected to score well on. So I think it, it's very complicated. But I think going by some indicators within the accountability might be the way.
Okay.
Two things. So she's being very modest.
She is.
So one, one thing I asked the school committee to do is to sort it, sort the accountability score from highest to lowest and see where Southeast has been sitting, who's ahead of us. Because all those other schools do not look like Southeast.
Right.
She's being very modest, okay, with the growth. And the other thing she didn't mention is she has taken time to, to break down in each content area a growth and scatter plot analysis that she meets with Joanna Courtney in every department and every vocational program on where their specific students did by question type and by literacy type, so that she's reaching across the aisles with working with the vocational teachers on areas that they can increase improvement as well and play a part in that. That goes back to how do we support for MCAS alt during vocational programs? Those are for all students. We do that. And what the vocational teachers do find is patterns that they're doing extremely well with. But then when they go back and they look at the particular question, they're saying, of course, this is asked just like a plumbing code book question. So they find patterns and then they reach across the aisles to other vocational programs and/or math or science teachers to show commonalities. So she has driven down into that improvement and change, which we have not done since about 2017, which will play into that as well.
Katie, you know that you've done a lot and we really appreciate your work. And, and there's no need to apologize. I know I'm putting you on the spot and asking really tough questions. And I know that this is not straightforward and simple. I think I'm just trying to help us make an informed decision on, on how we evaluate Holly and what's the best path to moving forward. So I really appreciate your feedback on that.
And I just, so I have one extra question.
Yeah.
The personal page for each district, is that the town's results or is that, okay?
Yes, for the district.
So not our students from?
No, no. It was, there was a request from the committee to see town by town. So and I think Deb will email you the slideshow tomorrow, so you'll have all of them.
They'll be in the package.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions for Katie?
All right. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Katie, did you want to go through the remaining two slides or?
So principal weapons are covered a lot of what we're doing within, within the vocational areas. I did also just want to highlight that next year, or for class of 2026, so the current sophomore has to hit a four seventy to pass or get their competency determination. So this year, we had twenty-three students that are now grade eleven that did not meet expectations in English, but only two of them have to retest. So if this was next year and we had twenty-three students not meet expectations, twenty-three would have to retest. So the state is raising the bar in what the competency determination is. Um, yes, so there, there's a lot. Even then, on the next slide. So I just wanted to remind you that we are part of the Inclusive Practices Academy, which really our special ed director, Joanne Boucher, has been spearheading with a lot of us on the admin team. But it is focusing on these diverse groups and these diverse learners, students with disabilities, English learners, making sure that we're culturally responsive in our teaching. It's really focusing on that instruction. And that's a three-year group that we are a part of. And this year is really about instructional circles and making sure that we have teachers that can train other trainers. We are offering academic support now for our students with disabilities. So they're receiving additional support, both in academic content and if they need help in organization or whatever their requirements of their IEP are. We are focusing on grade level standards. We have talked to you a lot about the high-quality math instruction. And we also want to highlight that we're promoting literacy throughout the school. So we have a reading specialist that has time built into her day and she's meeting with the vocational areas to make sure that literacy is important throughout the school because that's the basis, even in math, we teach math through language. So literacy is extremely important and that's being covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
All right, so that brings us to the next agenda or item, which is. All right, so that brings us to the next agenda item, which is finalize superintendent's goals. And the reason why we have this on the agenda was because of number one. Our proposed SMART goals to Holly was to increase the number of students meeting or exceeding expectations by a certain percentage in the 10th grade math and English MCAS for the 2023-2024 academic year. And, you know, as we can see, that's, that might not be the right goal to give her. And so we need to figure out what that goal should be. Now, we were given a lot of information today. I don't know if any of us feel prepared to try and hash this out tonight. So like with, with other, another thing that I mentioned, you know, if we want to postpone this discussion to next month, we can, or we can try and hash this out now.
How much more do we have left to our?
So what we can do is we can go through the rest of the agenda. So that would be talking about conferences, some new businesses, some reports of the committees, and then administrators. And I think that would pretty much conclude.
There's not, there's not too much.
Right, there's not a whole lot of stuff, but there still is a substantial amount.
I'm for hashing it out tonight because I'd rather do that than have like another meeting this month, but I don't.
No, it wouldn't be in an action, I would just add it to the next agenda, which, which could end up being for another long meeting.
Being very long as well.
That's, that's the risk that we run, that's, that's all I'm saying.
I don't know how anyone else feels.
All right, so how about this? Why don't I propose that we take the, we'll, we'll, we'll do the superintendent's goals at the end. Let's run through everything else, let's see where we are. And, you know, give us a little bit of time to just sit on this and then we can go back to that. Sound good?
We just can't shoot out 85% and say good luck.
Well, Katie, if you want to promote that, go make the motion. Alrighty, all right, so we are going to move on to 7E, which is the NSBA conference. And we're going to also talk about the MASC conference as well.
Okay, so historically, the National School Board Association Conference has been something that the school committee has participated in. And Deb and I kind of did some research, looking back at the last few times that people went. And it looks like, on average, you've sent about three school committee members, up to three school committee members, to participate in this conference. And so I don't know if you have a sense of who you'd like to send, who wants to go, who doesn't want to go.
So it's April 6th to 8th, 2024 in New Orleans.
Yeah.
Does that sound fun? Anybody interested in?
I'm interested.
Okay, so Robin? Anyone else?
I would love to go, but I really cannot, so.
No, I, I'm in the same boat, totally understand, totally understand.
We can ship them down to you.
Maybe Danny would, would make a schedule.
Right, like I could bring my whole family if you guys want and I'll go, but.
Who's got Danny sitting duty on Monday?
Right.
And I think Jen was maybe considering if it was a weekend, but I don't know.
Yeah, and we can ask her and, and the other people who are absent for that, so. We'll, we'll move forward to Robin and see.
When does, uh, when do we need to?
The early bird registration is by the end of November. So if, if we make a decision, at least by the next school committee meeting, that would give us, it's a fairly substantial discount.
Did they, their agenda posted yet to like see how hard these days are?
Yeah, the link is included.
Yeah, there's a link, so it might be worthwhile just to look at it.
Unlike the com, unlike the MS, MASC conference, which basically isn't all day, it goes, well, by the top, you know, dinner is even part of the conference where this one is more the nine-to-five type thing.
Okay, nice. All right, so about the MASC conference next month, there are a bunch of resolutions that will be proposed. And I am asking Robin if she would just go over, we're not going to be taking a formal vote, we're just going to be just, you know, talking about them.
Basically, since I'm the delegate from Southeastern to the delegate assembly, I just want an idea, and Barbara's the alternate, of, I want an idea of how the committee feels about the various resolutions, so, because I don't want to vote on something in a certain direction and find out that the committee's against it or for, you know, if I want to go against it, that they're for it. So I really would like to have some guidance.
Right, and actually, we are a sponsor of one of the resolutions, correct?
Yes, we are, resolution, resolution two. So the first one, and I'm going to do this very quickly, the first one is full funding of the Metco program. I don't think it, well Sharon, I think is part of Metco. I think it's the only town in our district that's probably part of Metco. But Metco is a program for inner-city kids from Boston to go out to suburban school systems. And it's been around forever and at least 50-something years, I think. So they just want to make sure it's fully funded. So that's the first one. The second one is the one we sponsored, which is about school transportation, that we would like the Inspector General or the Attorney General to look into what we believe is collusion in school bus contracts, the fact that you only get one bid. And it's pretty much throughout the state that the same thing's happening in every district. You put it out to bid it, you might get some interest and then suddenly when the final bid comes in, it's one come, and they seem to have their own, like areas, territories.
Should we tag onto that 100% funding that they always said was supposed to be there?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, we'll just pile on while we can.
So anyhow, so that's the second resolution, which is the one we sponsored. So the next one, next one's sort of a strange one. And I'm still, I've listened to it twice because I was at the, because we had sponsored a resolution, I went to the resolutions committee meeting back in the spring. And then we had, last week, they had a lunch and learn on the resolutions. And it's about regional transportation and I guess the, you know, the gap between the state and the state reimbursement and what it actually costs. And it was stuff about bus fees, et cetera. I don't think we're really going to get involved with bus fees.
Because we're on a main road, there's no availability there.
So it allows people to opt out with such transportation?
Yeah, if there were fees, the parents could decide to drive and opt out.
Yeah, the town Easton does that, so if you're within like, I think, two miles, you have to opt in.
How would that, of that transportation, if you still leave the same amount of buses, it's kind of a.
You don't, you don't give a bus route to children within like a two-mile radius, so they have to walk.
Would they drive right by them? It's still.
Right, oh, I know, yeah. But I guess it leaves capacity for buses or bus buses or whatever, I don't really know. I bet you that goes along with that resolution for the bus. But anyhow, so that's, uh, resolution three. Resolution four is.
They, they consistently are using the word pupil. I haven't seen that, wow.
What do they use?
The word pupil.
Yeah. Okay. Resolution four is to do what we've done and have a DEI officer in every, in every school district.
So we already have.
We already do it. So we're ahead of them. Yes, so we can, uh, resolution five is about the MS, the MSBA and the fact that on the accelerated repair program, it's been underfunded. And that really, I think, is going to affect Brockton a lot. In fact, I think that's part of the problem, is they're going to run through all that money. And so they, you know, to fund it a little better. And one particular, the schools, the district that sponsored it is concerned about preschool, is pre-K, because they don't pay for pre-K on the MSBA program. So they want their pre-K building, building to be affected.
Each report's going to run as well.
Yeah, so that was the one, that's about that one. Yeah, I have them here, the full, they're here. Okay, which, okay. This one, resolution six is to put cameras on buses, but the cameras would be put on the outside of the buses to try to catch people who seem to like to speed pass a stop school bus. And not only do the, and what they want to do, because current law is if you, unless a, a police officer catches the driver, nothing can happen. So they want, they feel if they have the cameras, you'll have a record and you'll be able to find the drivers. And we're also, I think, is they'd like to increase the fines, because this is, this is definitely a safety issue. So that was sponsored by TVD, I think, and Marlboro or something. Yeah. And Framingham would like to do something about MCAS, not make it high stakes. You know? So that's basically the, the resolutions in a very summarized form.
There's one more, there's eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, if they, if they're successful and act, they can moratorium on MCAS, that changes.
Yes, that would be very different.
Then we don't have to worry about the goal set, right? Well, I was thinking about that too.
Okay. And resolution eight is about safe storage of firearms, that they want to make sure that people who have firearms in their house have them locked.
How does that relate?
That's current law, though. Sorry. That's current law.
Not going to school anyway.
Right, well, it is current law, but I guess they want to, you know, sort of reinforce the idea that people who have firearms in their house should have them in locked boxes.
That's Massachusetts law.
It is Massachusetts law. It's a little, yeah, it's a little redundant, but that's.
Can't bring them to school.
Whatever. What's, who submitted that resolution? Wasn't it Framingham?
Framingham, Framingham does a lot of resolutions.
So is everybody strongly opposed to any of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a.
Okay.
I'd like to see cameras on the inside of the buses, that would be, you know.
Well, that could be interesting.
That's what I thought, that's, that's what I was thinking.
If you do them on the outside.
If you want to do traffic enforcement, I don't think they should be using school buses for their purposes.
Maybe that's for the next resolution, we'll see.
What, that they shouldn't be used for traffic enforcement?
Absolutely not, I don't think so.
Oh, do you know how many people pass school buses?
I do understand that, but I also understand that the safety of the driver that's driving that school bus, that, that information may get back to someone that's unhappy, should also be considered.
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem putting them inside, but I think that the outside.
Okay, so why don't we move on to new business?
So that's it, those are the resolutions, so.
All right.
Nobody's opposed to any of them.
No, you move your conscience.
That's right. So, A, Easton's tricentennial celebration.
Okay, so I was approached at the beginning of the school year by the gentleman who is sort of overseeing the organization of the Town of Easton's tricentennial celebrations in 2025. And he also did Sharon's 300 year, 350 something. So he is looking for us to support the Town of Easton through big and small things. The small things are like, they're going to design a patch for the tricentennial, you know, could we put it on a performance form or things like that? But then also, can we help them like print brochures? Can we make a cake to celebrate their tricentennial? Can we, they want our students to build a float and participate in the parade, which would be awesome. So one of the things he asked was that, obviously, this is, you know, all funded through the town and through some small donations, would we be willing to waive some of our fees associated with producing some of this work? So I wanted to, and I said I wanted to reach out to you as a school committee and say, you know, do we want to set like a, a cap? Like we'll waive a materials fee or whatever up to a certain amount, you know, so that we can be, you know, good citizens in, in, of Easton, but also at the same time recognizing that, you know, we are a public school and the materials that we have cost money and the time that we, we have cost money. But, you know, can we sort of, you know, as, as a school committee, would you want to, to say we're willing to waive the first hundred dollars or whatever, the first of a project or something like that? I, I don't have a strong opinion about one way or another, I just wanted to.
When is the tricentennial?
It's not until 2025. So to his credit, he's given us lots of time.
Oh, yeah.
And they have a number of events starting like from January 1st all the way to the end of the school year, all the way to the end of the year, they're going to have a big gala at Stonehill College. So it does look like it's, it's going to be a very, very nice event. I think you might have seen the new signage they have around town. A lot of that is associated with, you know, with branding for the, for the tricentennial.
Yeah. So Mark, if we were going to participate in this, what would you recommend as a reasonable amount to contribute towards this?
I guess it would develop how much we're doing, right? Is it just one cake? Is it a hundred cakes? Is it? How big do you flow? How would you flow?
What's the average fee for that?
It's material, it's, it's minimal, right? They're really our minimal fee.
But things like food can be worked into different pricing categories, right? Like you could raise the prices of a restaurant and you can make up those fee costs that we give away in food. But if we're building a float that carpentry, so I mean, how often are we?
That'd be a great project.
I was going to say electric go-kart float.
You already have a foundation, right?
I really, like if the students want to build, if we want to build a float, that's really, you know, that's instructional, that could be for our related curriculum. I'm really thinking about things like producing signs, if they ask us to produce brochures, if, things like that, that are really sort of related to them marketing what they're doing. Well, do we want to waive or waive some of our?
Well, I was thinking like, could we say that we'll do certain items at a cost up to a certain capped amount for whatever it is, cakes, signs, whatever it is, and just figure out what that dollar amount is that we would.
Could we give them materials only? You know, not charge any labor or anything like that?
I don't think we charge.
We don't charge.
We charge a scholarship fee.
Yeah.
So like, so we had business stats printed, it's really just materials, that's all you're doing? Okay.
So, you know, basically we don't.
Can you use child labor, is that what you're doing?
Which was, like, and print materials are relatively low in cost, where you could leave those again and work those into a budget.
Could we go shoot because of our food truck, so we can recoup some of that money back during the tricentennial?
Well, I mean, and there are some things that, you know, they ask if we can provide bus drivers during like one of their big events. And I said, yeah, but we'd have to charge for that. You know, like there are things that we can't waive the fees because they're staffing us and, and fuel costs, not the nine-to-five.
Can we recoup some, can we use like the cake, do like cake decorating for the vocational? Make that a, a chapter seventy-four and.
Uh, but I just want to warn you that Stoughton has their 300 the year after.
Will this reuse?
So this could loom into something where.
Yeah, we need to reuse the float, we need to make that.
If you can reuse the float, that's good.
We'll put you on charge.
Not a problem.
I mean, as a school system.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we have the right to charge what we want to charge.
What I may suggest is if it's something that's built into the curriculum of that shop that we have in our supply account, the committee may want to say, well, we'll donate that, right? Because it's built in, the kids are learning on it. If it's something that wouldn't be part of their curriculum and it's going to be purchased above and beyond, then maybe we, we charge for that or some type of fee for that. But if it's something that's, it's like, if that's in carpentry's curriculum and we have the two-by-fours, the plywood and what we need to build it, the kids are learning, it's part of their curriculum, then that could be donated. Again, but that's just something, just let me think of something like that.
And there's, there's nothing that would prevent us from donating to the town? There's no.
The town technically says it will.
Yeah, that's right.
We can have the full administration on the float waving through the center of Easton.
Oh, yeah, the. I'm, I'm not opposed to putting a cap on, if you guys are comfortable with a cap, just kind of, you know, keep things, I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed to putting a cap on, if you guys are comfortable with a cap, just kind of, you know, keep things, I'm not opposed to.
Why don't I sort of, he's given me a list of some things. Why don't we do like a rough estimate of what the total cost would be if we, if we did it all and then bring that back in November? What are we comfortable with?
Yeah, we have time and he'll give us numbers.
We do, and I, you know, I've already expressed to him that, of course, we want to be a part of the celebrations.
Yeah, and like, can we use that group truck to, you know?
Gird a little bit ourselves.
Yeah, put, no, that would be good.
Yeah, we'll just add it under whole business.
All right, we did B, so now we're at C, STEM Week presentation.
We're going to do this one.
And this Katie Tuchanardi again.
Let me see if I can get her newsletter that she's creating up on the screen.
Joanne and I set a goal this year of exposing the school to Mass STEM Week. We had some other events in the school prior, but we really wanted to make it school-wide this year. So Mass STEM Week celebrates STEM in Massachusetts and is held October 16th through the 20th. And we are starting our programming with Lunch and Learn. And what we're doing is on Monday, we have Jaclyn Jones, who does our BOSS program, which stands for Black Outstanding Smart and Successful. She's coming to all lunches to talk about women in STEM and also promote for her BOSS program while she's here. On Tuesday, we're offering a Lunch and Learn in the library with two girls from the cybersecurity shop who work with Mr. Komat to come in and talk about coding. So the way that it will work is students will get this newsletter tomorrow and then they'll sign into a Google form and they get to select the lunch that they're a part of and then select the food that they want and we'll have the lunch delivered to the library and then they'll come to the library on that day and they'll Lunch and Learn while their peers present to them. So Tuesday is all about coding and it's done by girls who code. Wednesday is about 3D printing. So we have students from the engineering program and Mr. Goldenbusky coming to talk about how you bring an idea to life through 3D printing. And on Thursday, we have students from the cosmetology program coming to talk about structure and the bonds of hair and how it's essential, like with heat tools and thermal styling, to understand like the chemical processing that happens with the hair. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we'll have those Lunch and Learns. And then also on the 17th, we're having a panel. And this was set up through connecting activities with our cosmetology teacher, Christine Bothier, to have music industry professionals come in and host a panel for students in grades 10 and 12. So they will tell their shop teacher that they want to be part of this presentation and go to the panel. And then their shop teachers will help get them on the list. And we also invite students from other communities to come in for this panel presentation through connecting activities. So we are starting STEM Week in this fashion. We're just sort of jumping into it in this way. We have some bigger plans for next year that will start next spring and try and tap a lot more of our vocational areas to really highlight all we're doing in building, connecting to STEM, which is.
That's good.
Malik's been on our advisory board for about 15 years.
Oh, nice, yeah, cool. Any questions? Awesome, thank you so much. Yeah, so moving on to nine, report of the committees. First is the chair's report, just a couple of things, I don't have a lot. It's just a reminder that Joe Dutcher's celebration of life is on October 15th from 1:00 to 6:00 in Middleborough at the Barnett Street Burn Hill. So Joe was the person who preceded Andy in his role, who had, and had recently passed away. So I, I just wanted to make mention of that, if anybody can attend, that would be appreciated. I unfortunately cannot make it then. Just also, just wanted to extend thanks for everyone who came out for the advisory dinner. That was awesome, we had really great attendance from school committee and that was noticed. And, and so I just want to thank you all for that. I know that we're all juggling jobs and school committee and other things and, and so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And also as well, just thank you for all of you who've been coming out even to the subcommittee meetings. You know, while you can't vote, your input is important and it's just great to have so many people show up to these meetings. So just wanted to extend my thanks for that. So Barbara, do you have anything for the legislative?
I'll try to be quick because I'm.
Okay, sure.
I just want to recap the legislative report from the MASC. There's much to celebrate, they say. Governor Healy is promised to make public school education a priority and she has done so with her $56 billion budget. She's included the fair share amendment dollars for the first time, used to supplement the state's support for public education and transportation, increased in Chapter 70 for full funding for the Student Opportunity Act with the goal of addressing equity for low-income students, English and language learners, and special education. $172 million in permanent funding to provide free school meals to all K-12 public school students, funding for the special ed circuit breaker reimbursement, and funding increased from 80 to 90% for regional transportation. There are more things to do, but that's what she put in.
All right, well, thank you so much, Barbara, appreciate that. So now we're at C, Policy and Technical Institute Subcommittee's Joint Meeting. So that would be Barbara and Tony sharing the floor here.
How do you want to do it?
Actually.
Shouldn't we defer to Pat?
Actually, I was going to say that, Pat, can you save us?
I did, I did print it out in case he didn't know, but I think we'll defer to you.
Well, we were fortunate to have a joint meeting between the policy and the TI subcommittees because we were bringing a change to our practical nurse admissions policy to the committees and something we're hoping to implement quickly. The big change is that we are no longer accepting outside scores. In the past, or since the pandemic, students have been able to test remotely through ATI or at other locations and we would accept those scores. We're rolling that back and no longer doing that. And that we are, we didn't change scores that were acceptable, but we also are changing, we used to accept, they could test twice within two years. We're changing that to three times within two years during this transition period. So anyone that is applying to the nursing program will test here at Southeastern rather than remotely.
That's it.
In a nutshell.
In a nutshell, thank you.
So, there should be a motion.
Yes, and so Tony and Barbara, do you, what, what is your recommendation?
We highly recommend as, we highly recommend the changes that Pat has given us a presentation on, highly recommend it, right?
And Barbara, you agree?
Absolutely recommend it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to recommend to approve the revisions of the practical nurse admission policy as recommended by the Technical Institute Director, Superintendent Policy Subcommittee and Technical Institute Subcommittee and to waive the second reading.
Second.
Early discussion? If not, let's take this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Yes, one at seven zero.
Thank you, Pat, thank you.
All right, other reports? All right, so we're going to move on to the Report of Committees and Administrators. So first is a report of the superintendent at home.
So you will see attached, as we mentioned, we do celebrate our employees' plus longevity here at the school district. And there is quite a lengthy list of folks who have been here for a long time, including a bus driver with 25 years and Lisa Bodio, our receptionist, 30 years.
Almost as long as me. Notice what she's got.
You'll also see a brief biography for all of our new employees or employees who have new positions here at the school district. And one of the things we're quite proud of is that over the last five to seven years, we've really done as a district, a good job in providing a pathway for paraprofessionals to teacher here. And so you will see as you read through, there are some folks who started out here as paraprofessionals and have now gone on to become teachers. So I encourage you to just take a minute to kind of go through each of those. And then finally, the only other thing I want to say is I know that you are aware that we had an incident here on Friday regarding a threatening message that we found in a bathroom, a student reported out of the bathroom. And I want folks to understand the process, you know, when this occurred, when it was reported to us, Principal Weckeser and I worked with our school resource officer and also in consultation with the chief of police in Easton to determine the best steps to take. You know, you can never be 100% sure about any of these things. We were fairly certain it was not a credible threat, however, took it very seriously. And we, and the chief of police did, did deploy multiple armed police officers here for dismissal to be, you know, an embodiment of caution. So I just want folks to understand that we don't make decisions, Principal Weckeser and I do not make decisions like that in a vacuum. That we did consult with the local chief of police and our home SRO to make a decision, we thought this was in the best interest of our students and our staff's safety. But obviously, that is not behavior that would be tolerated here, ever. And, you know, any student who is bound to have participated in, in that will be subject to, to discipline, obviously, indirectly.
All right, moving on to D, Principal's report, Leslie.
Okay, so as you all received your invitations tonight, we're now down on the final preparation for NEAS visit, which is the week of November 13th through 16th. I anticipate a team of 20 to 25 outside evaluators that will be spending the entire week with us, talking with students, talking with teachers, talking with parents, with advisory board members, school council members, about all the meat and potatoes of every department within Southeastern. We're looking forward to it. Our co-chair has already commented how far ahead we are in the planning process and now we're waiting on her, which is good. I hope you can join us all for the dinner. We have some graduates that are coming back. A very beautiful kickoff presentation before our dinner. And hopefully, we will get, so we'll get an exit report on that Thursday, which will be very topical, but a more detailed report in January. In here, I have included in my attachments, if you remember correctly, we did a one-year school improvement plan and then extended it for one year. But in January, the quick turnaround, we're going to have to start focusing on a new three-year school improvement plan. So once our staff is, has completed NEAS, I will begin multiple focus groups around our achievement and instructional and our belonging data, us around student engagement and those kind of things. So I will keep you prepared and informed on that process. I'm starting, if you haven't noticed, is one of the things that I'm highlighting is students that demonstrate leadership capabilities both in school and outside of school. We have a bulletin board in our main hallway. The last two presentations have been students. This was a freshman student who has been in our school for about four weeks that shared her external project with me, so I think that speaks volumes. But I'm going to start highlighting them as a hawks in, on a bulletin board. But I would like, before I put the, the students that are nominated and come forward, I would like the school committee to review them, just that, you know, given the stamp of approval to go up on the board. So that's your input. As you can hear, the, the dress code and the student IDs are not popular, but I can tell you, standing at our entrance, when you have a school as big as 1,600 students and about 1,200 of them will walk in through the front doors with their IDs on, it's going to be a little bit painful in the beginning, but I ask for your support because it is teaching them responsibility. And especially with the dress code and the IDs in a vocational school, they are safety issues. Okay? And put in there a copy of our school council members that were elected by our parents, just so that you would have them, my presentation in the minutes, and also an update on our faculty in service. So if you remember correctly, when we met at the retreat and talked about how our, our staff feel like they've been in this recovery, you know, gerbil on a wheel kind of focus. And the MTSS Institute that Katie made mention about all the things that we're doing around inclusive practices within our building, all the things that the staff have been working on is both for, to set that culture, our belonging, but also to make sure that we're being very intentional on our instructional practices that we're reaching all students. So I included that presentation in there. And, and also, all the athletic events were October, if you've heard many of them. October is fall sports, is our highest participated season. And many of our students only participate, our senior students in particular, only participate in the fall. So if you can get to some of those events, it would be nice.
Thank you so much, Leslie. Yes, just.
Yeah, so a quick question about the dress code? What exactly?
It's getting enforced.
So is what, whatever?
So it, there's nothing real different except for they want a clarification in a few items which they requested last year that was in Molly's report. And if you remember correctly, we did a video, which I shared. This year, everything is the same in our dress code. But what, when we were getting the students back from the pandemic, you really had to determine what battle you were going to pick. And for the last two years, it's been, we want them in school and we want them learning. We want them get, building relationships with us and telling things. This year, we're getting back to the basics, which is the same code of dress that we've had in our handbook for the last four or five years. IDs, which has been in our handbook, and parties. Okay, which are all things that have been in our handbook. So for kids that we were just trying to get out of that online world with the circle of seeing the sailing fans to come to school the last two years, that's where our focus has been. Where they're back, they're acclimated, you see, we hit 95% attendance, well, why? Which is where it should be. Now we're digging down a little bit deeper into our dress code in our, in our IDs.
Well, because that's also a problem of Brockton High.
Yeah. But again, to, at the end of the day, when you're asking teachers to build relationships with students, do you want them saying, well, why aren't you prepared for class with your dress? No, so we've taken a different approach in behavior management is having private conversations with them. And many of the parents are saying, I had no idea that they went out to school.
He gives blankets and Crocs.
No, no, and it is, and a lot of it is safety hazards. You know, I've had more, more parents call me why their child has wrinkles in the back of their shirt, right, than, than opposing it. So.
Next, TI director's report, Pat.
Hello. So in the TI in September, the 14th and 15th, we hosted a visiting team from MAYR, which is the Medical Assistant Review Board. They usually come about every 10 years. Took us about a year to get ready for the visit. They have 128 competencies that are cognitive, psychomotor, and affective and we include them in all the syllabi. We have to show evidence that we taught it, that students were evaluated. So like I said, it took us about a year to get ready for it. Donna Becker and Rhonda Basler, who was the program director for medical assistance, worked very hard to pull that together. And so the visit went well. They were with us on the 14th all day, they left early again on the 15th and there were no findings. So their next step is to notify MAYR that, they sent a report to MAYR, which they have done, and we expect to get full approval again early next year. Hopefully, another 10-year timeline.
Great job. Not have to think about.
Not have to think about them yet for a while, so. No, they, the faculty did really well with it. The students did well, they, just like NEAS, they talked to students, they talked to graduates, they talked to the advisory board, they talked to clinical sites, and so it did go very well. Over the summer, we had some Perkins money that we used to try to address some of our PM attrition issues, and so we ran a summer support session for the incoming class that covered some study skills and some math skills and a medical terminology course, and had a, one of the high school paras, bilingual paras work with the students in those sessions as well. About half of the students attended at least one of them and several attended many of the, the sessions. So we did an additional survey and the feedback was good, so we're going to do another one in another couple of weeks when they're into the semester to, to see if they found it still to be very useful, and then we're hoping to be able to expand on that next summer. And there's a list of things that are going on. For us, the next big thing is our open house on November the 4th. We, I think, we don't participate, we're here for the high school open house, but it's very high school focused, so we're there to smile and say, yes, we're the post-secondary people, and this is how you get to this room. And so we break ours up and we have a trades open house and a health open house. So the health open house is November the 4th, which is a Saturday morning. It's a lot of fun. We have usually a lot of people, there's CPR races going on and, you know, you can check your skin to see how much sun damage you've had. It's a wonderful event.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for her? All right, moving on, it's actually the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion.
Good evening. Just a few things, just to be, this will be brief, I'm always the last one before we end, so I wanna make sure I get through. All, from last month to this month, not, not much of change, but just have a few updates. One, for, within our HR department, we're doing an employee lunch and learn, which, which this month we will focus on our frontline central, so that'll be held on the 18th. We'll be hosting employee lunch and learn. On the session, this is to support our employees in navigating frontline central, our employees' paperwork, which is our employees' paperwork hub and absentee management tracking system. This initiative aims to enhance employee efficiency, understanding, ultimately benefiting our school district's operations. These lunch and learns that we'll be holding within the HR department will be recurring and feature throughout the year, covering various topics tailored to needs of our employees and promoting transparency within the school district. Our wellness program has been continuing and has been successful. Many of our educators, we do it every Monday with meditation and yoga, many of our educators have been, been, you know, texting and emailing and saying that they've just been so excited about this program. We're looking to add a couple additional things, including dance lessons, including other physical activities for others who may be interested in other things to do, and so we're working on that currently. We are, on October 23rd, we will have our annual flu clinic, which would, sponsored by Walgreens, this event will be provided by our, provided for all our employees with the opportunity to receive their flu and COVID-19 vaccinations, ensuring health and safety and wellness within our community as well. On the DEI side, some of the stuff had been mentioned, we did host our MCAL retreat this past, two Fridays ago, so, which, which, which MCAL, if you're not familiar, is our Association of Massachusetts Equity Leaders Retreat. The event brought together various departments and teams, including our grounds and custodial areas, led by Bob Riley and Scott Nelson, our director of vocational, Mary Colby, the boot and shovel culinary staff and students, Brianna Brown and her step team and students, and Mr. Dave Moorhead, who actually works, who helps us here with our technology at night, helped us with our technology readiness there. That collective effort, honestly, to, to be, not just as something for Southeastern, but it's also for the state of Massachusetts and for us to be part of that and to be, you know, leading the way and providing a space for equity leaders to get together is just really huge for our district. And then, you know, the other piece here, we have our CEE initiatives that are beginning on October 17th, which will be creating subgroups to further assist fostering equity within our school community, so more to come with that. CEE, if you're unfamiliar with the acronym, it is our Southeastern Equity Advancement Team. Right now, we have about 43 educators who are, who are part of this group, and right now, a half dozen students who have signed up, so those initiatives, and it will be great moving forward as we are creating subcommittees. Once we establish those subcommittees, we will then have actual CEE reports that will come out to the full committee here, so.
Thank you, Rob. I recognize that you're always last, I think we need to change it up. No, really, yeah.
My time, and it goes up, my girl. That was mentioned, that was mentioned.
No, no, I was sorry, I was like, I was thinking about, I was thinking about before you mentioned it, I was like, why is yours last? Last but not least, for sure. So thank you. Any questions for Rob? Okay, item 11 is new bar code, still there.
Okay. So my objection, I, what I would like to do is the following, I'd like to take a five-minute break. We are going to go back and go over Holly's goals, and then we need to enter into the executive session after. So that's what I'm doing. All right, so we will come back, let's say, it's a seven minutes, so that would be, wait, let me, wait, let me check the official time clock here. Let's do eight, 8:50. All right, so we'll come back here, 8:50 ready to go. Let's go. Thanks.
Are you so happy you're doing this?
We'll get through the big talks.
But it's too difficult because she's the supervisor.
She is the supervisor, but at the same time like.
How is this true?
Exactly.
But it got rough. If I import the place.
Because I don't want to give Holly a goal that is not achievable because it affects them too. So it's kind of, that's why I kind of went rehearsed.
And they knew it was like, oh, gonna lose you.
Oh, yeah. They used to buy in the rest.
They need to start paying them a little bit more. Yeah.
In the difference that was the state, which she had said that, the better it is.
Overall, but she can play.
Right, right.
So they keep ramping up.
All right, folks, it's eight fifty. We're gonna resume now. Can we get everybody back at the table, please? One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, no. Okay.
No, not at all.
All right. So next item on the agenda is going to be the superintendent's goals. And we are looking at goal number one, which was an MCAS goal. And I think from Katie's report, which is very thorough, I mean, there are a lot of things to think about. And so I would love to hear some of our teachers weigh in a little bit. Not naming names.
There's only one.
Well, we're all just retired teachers, so, you know.
Yeah.
But, you know.
No, but I thought the other southeastern teachers were here.
Yeah. What did it do to her, then? I mean, you're, you, you know, you teach to, to English language learners.
I'm not, I'm not a fan of, of MCAS.
Right. I have a good opinion.
No, no, go ahead, yeah.
I think the first goal, a percentage of MCAS was a pretty unattainable goal to start with. I don't think it was thought out enough for us to put it on her SMART goals. And I do not think it is reflective of her role and leadership as a superintendent. I think when we're going back to goal discussion, it really should be, like, if you want to say, if you want to attack the, what, the credibility or the, whatever the percentage was, I don't remember. Accountability, thank you. Um, if you want to attack that from a certain point and say, oh, you know, we got a two score in math, let's see if we can get back to a three next year, I think that is a much different goal than percentage of overall.
I mean, is everybody in agreement with that? The way that it's written, no matter what number we put in, is it really an achievable goal?
Yes. It should be stricken from the record.
Okay, well, stricken, well, strike that from the record.
I personally would rather see a goal that is put towards employee morale and ethics.
Something like that, right.
And the overall community of the teachers and staff, because we know how well the students do. We know how the students feel. I don't know if we hear from a staff perspective enough.
Uh, how would we make that a quantitative?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue.
So, and I think this gets back to our equity, um, our, what is it, our equity.
Equity audit, so that's, that is gonna measure some of that. So I think that would be achieved through that.
Yeah, so maybe there's a change in the way we do. So this year, we had you pretty much write out your goal, like, your opinion on how you did your goals, correct?
The school committee voted for three goals for me last year.
Right. But then you, you.
And the benchmarks.
Right, so then you took the benchmarks from the state. You measured how you.
The, the school committee last year in October voted for three goals for me, including the benchmarks.
Okay.
Yeah. But they were general first year, like, just trying to keep, try and keep everything from going off the rails during their first year, which is.
Yes.
Right.
So what?
So as I look at the achievement goal, because, no, I, I don't, I'm not in the classroom, right? But I am the instructional leader for the school district. At the end of the day, achievement does, is my responsibility, right? Um, you know, either through staffing, through putting people like Katie in the right place, or through implementation of policy, through implementation of the budget, like, it is on me, right? Um, but as I looked at the numbers, the things that really struck me were the, uh, low growth percentage for our students with disabilities. And like Katie said, tho- those are things that, that are reflective of what we are doing here as opposed to just an MCAS score, right? So, you know, a student might never have met expectations in English, and then they get here and they partially meet, right? And they've had some growth, well, that's, that's progress. So for me, when I look at, at the data, I look at the students with disabilities, the students, Hispanic and Latinx students, and I see that there's some real, there's some real gaps there that are way bigger than, um, you know, so if I could design my own goal, I would want to make sure that we are continuing to make substantial progress towards goals as a school district. But then, there, can we look at how, you know, some measurable narrowing of that achievement gap for our students with disabilities? Even if it's two percent, right? Just something where we are seeing that what we're doing is being impactful for our students with disabilities. And to take away, because that, that number is.
No, are we all in agreement that we need a student achievement goal as number one? Does anybody object to that?
As number one, or?
Oh, so we have, you know, we have these goals, we're talking about equity and equity audits, we're talking about behavior management, we're talking about co-ops, we're talking about superintendent mentorship, and the purpose of one, number one, was really to talk about student achievement. So are we in agreement that we should have a goal around student achievement? However it looks like, whether it's related to MCAS or not.
That's the whole idea, buddy.
Exactly, right. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here. Okay, so we're, we're doing that. So then I guess the second question is, um, how would we measure? So that, I think there are two things that we need to look at, right? The first is, how do we measure progress as a school district generally? And then how are we gonna measure progress, um, for these two? Or even, we can even extend it to, to other, um, groups that have very low growth percentages. So how can we do both? And we might need to do, like, several goals in one, right?
Obviously, student attendance improving on student, you know, and maintaining student attendance. That, that covers the whole group.
Well, that's all part of accountability.
Right, and accountability, they got the full score.
So that.
Around absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. So they got all the points that they needed for that. So where, so I think the, it was the English language arts growth and math growth that they scored kind of half of the total possible points. And then in achievement, it was ELA and science that brought you to an eight out of twelve. And those two combined is sixty percent of the weight.
So the question is, how would we get, how would we get Holly to help the teachers improve with the ELA and science? Or help get the students to improve?
Well, and I guess, you know, my, my, and this goes back to my, and I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but a lot of this is related to long-term strategic planning.
Right.
Which, if, if all of the goals, whatever they are, are preparing us, as Leslie said, like, we need to, we're required to have a long-term school improvement, and we're required to have this district strategic plan. How does all of what we're doing this year prepare for us to create that plan in the coming year, right? And that's where I'm really struggling a little bit around accountability, is that we haven't, we have not, as a school community, developed a strategic plan that we are going to implement to improve our accountability.
If I'm not mistaken, they said it's a move that's gonna change.
Right. And, like, yeah. So you can't compare apples to apples either. And then you have students shifting out.
Well, if you do now. Desi's here to help, remember that.
And even the MCAS, I mean, it's not static. I mean, they changed the passing, they changed the.
They're changing the passing scores.
Passing scores every year, you know? I think sometimes they want the MCAS results to come out a certain way. So, I mean, I'm used to the old scoring on the MCAS, it used to be out of two eighty, and now it's different. But the thing is that a two, you would, let's say, get a two sixty, sometimes you would need, like, you know, so many point, you know, have so many points for two sixty-one year, and the next year will be a completely different total to get. And so, I mean, I, I, I really have a problem with measuring things through MCAS.
Okay, so then how would we measure if we're not gonna use MCAS?
Tell me as a, as a question.
No, no, I was just, I, I just want to go by what, what Holly suggested. So when you look at ELA or ELL, I, I don't remember the exact acronym. So we look at baseline, which is where we are, and you look at, I think you, Holly, you suggested two percent?
Well, yeah, when I'm looking at, like, growth, right? I don't know if it's two percent, whatever, but if we look at the total accountability, as, you know, the, I'm looking to see if I can bring it up, so I think.
So there's the one with the M, math MCAS scores that says, so twenty twenty-two is thirty-three percent meeting or exceeding, and then twenty twenty-three, forty-four percent meeting or exceeding, and fifty-nine percent of students not meeting expectations are students with disabilities.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So I, I, we're following the rules and I, but nonetheless, I think that we should not be holding, at this point, Holly, with respect to number one, it was? We should not be connecting Holly to MCAS.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we just need to.
You know, I wondered about that, how could, I, truthfully, I, I'm thinking about it.
No, I think that's an incentive.
I didn't see how we could do that.
No, it's on the table, it's on the table.
But, and we have our issues with MCAS, and we're trying to hold our superintendents.
Right, so Christine's question is, is how do we, what kind of goal can we set for Holly to encompass this, make a student goal for Holly?
I take Holly's suggestion. You made a suggestion. We, remind us of.
You know, and, and again, I, I, I want to credit Katie with, you know.
Katie, okay.
Helping all of us understand more deeply. But I think if you look at our accountability results, where we have, where we have room for improvement and where we have some.
Control.
Ability and control.
Right, right.
Is in student growth percentages related to English language arts and mathematics, right?
So I was right, okay.
Yeah. And then in particular, as it relates to, as Christine just pointed out, you know, that our students who are not doing as well are really our students with disabilities.
And that would cover it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, right now, they're, you know, either they declined or they remained the same. At a minimum, right, we should see that they are making progress towards the goals or that they are back on track for where they, where we were.
Where before.
Or, right.
Okay.
Like, that may be a reasonable.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to pull out. So if I, so in saying that, do you have thoughts on how you would move that needle?
Do I have thoughts on how I would do it?
Yes.
That's a comp, I mean, that's complicated.
That's complicated, right.
But, I mean, there's a lot of work going on right now around universal design for learning, about inclusive teaching practices, um, around deeper learning, I mean, around the higher quality math curriculum, or around, like, there's a lot of work going on.
And would I, and, and so if we suggested, or we do a motion, two percent, would that bother you? Would that be a concern?
In terms of student growth?
Yes. Okay, so can we just, please?
And, so you want to make a goal as you want to raise two percent in student growth improvement around language arts and math?
Please?
At, well, and, well, as it relates to special populations.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, two percent in student growth improvement in ELA and math.
Well, are we doing ST two? Yeah, because ST. So it's a sixty-six percent.
Is that one of the target of population?
So it's a sixty-six.
I'm having it in front of me.
Sixty-six percent of students not meeting expectations are students with disabilities.
But that's related to MCAS for.
Oh, 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 so we're, wait, 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 we're talking about growth.
Yes.
Okay, so this is two percent in student growth improvement.
Yeah, we're talking about the accountability and how.
In ELA and math.
Yes.
For the which populations?
All right, so students with disabilities and English language learners.
Yeah, and Hispanic, Latinx.
Hispanic, Latinx. Because there's overlap there.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Not entirely, but there's definitely a little.
Well, I mean, the Latinx community was specifically identified.
Right.
Yes. That makes, okay.
This would be for goal number one. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna replace the proposed goal number one, which wasn't finalized anyway, with this goal number one for Holly's SMART goals for the next academic year. Okay.
Madam Chair, we're gonna entertain a motion with respect to the goals?
Yes, we do, yeah. We just need to, we need to get the language correct first. So, all right, so we got that down, so I'll entertain a motion.
Are we gonna go through one at a time, or can I just?
Do we need to do that again?
Oh, do you want to go?
No, Holly, do you say we need?
Let's do one.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we vote for one and get one? Yeah, we'll go for, all right, so I'll entertain a motion for number one.
So moved.
Read me again what the goal is.
Two percent in student growth improvement in ELA and math for students with disabilities, ELL students and Hispanic, Latinx students.
I can agree.
Can I, will you second? Did you second it?
Yes, yes.
Now watch Katie, you'll come back, you'll be like, that's crazy.
I hope not.
All right, I'm gonna take this to vote, so all favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, I just have it seven zero. Okay, we'll move to number two.
Number two, I, I, it's very clear to me.
Okay, two, we're good, number three.
Number three, this is the one that, that, I, I'm gonna be honest, I have some concerns.
Can we bring it up on the?
Yeah. So number three is, so for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic year, decrease the number of incidents requiring behavior management by ten percent. So what is a, what is an acceptable goal to, to do what we're trying to do, but maybe word it a little bit better?
So our, our baseline, just so you know, is that last year, we had sixty-six reportable behavior incidents.
Right, you.
You don't have a baseline really, in saying that.
You mentioned that you don't have a baseline.
So you don't have more.
Now, a reportable behavior incident is something.
Right, I get it.
Uh, drug, alcohol, tobacco use, fighting, um, harassment, bullying, you know, not just being a knucklehead, right? Um, what I, what I would like to see is, because I really don't feel like I have a baseline to start from, is, um, to ensure that we are, have developed a, um, a reliable reporting system. And I would include, since this is a very big issue for our staff, it seems, it's an issue for parents, it's an issue for everyone, that we build in, like, every two months, I have a, I report out to the school committee on where we, on reportable incidents, the number of reportable incidents, what kind of discipline strategies we're using, what kind of strategies that are alternatives to suspension that we're using, how many long-term suspensions there are, and things like that. Because all of last year, we had five. This year, I, we've already had four, right?
And we have new staff, right? So we have new staff, we, we're adding staff, you know, so.
You know, and again, and I don't, this is not, this is not an, an issue that people weren't managing behavior last year. But we had a bifurcated system. People had different ways of reporting it, different ways of recording it out. It's not that people weren't managing behavior, and I want to really emphasize that. But I think we can tighten up the reporting piece of it to follow up with teachers, like, you know, what does that look like? What's the average turnaround time between the time that something is reported and, and when? When are we looping back with the, with the teacher or staff member to say, this has been resolved? Teachers don't always get to know what the resolution is, but at least to know, this has been resolved.
So could we do something like develop a reliable, consistent behavior management system? With, um, so we don't have one currently, is my question. We do not have a reliable behavior management.
Because, oh, go.
It's been put in place this year.
Yeah, this, this year.
Everyone does it differently.
Now, now it's all standardized.
And it's been communicated out to the teachers and staff on how they're gonna go about this.
So that would be the first piece, and then the second piece for the transparency would be, would be every other month, Holly would need to report on behavior management, or, you know, somebody from the staff.
Can I do quarterly instead of every other month? Like, every three weeks?
Every three?
Yes, because I think.
Or you feel is, you know.
Every other month is a lot.
Um, because I think right now, like, we're, we're seeing, like, we're really, um, and again, you know, the principal made a very good point, like, we were just trying to get kids to come to school.
Right.
For a long time, and, you know, we didn't want to make it about, make sure your ID's on, don't wear that to school. This, you know, but now it's like, okay, folks, like, things have swung a little bit too far the other way, so we do need you to have your IDs on, because that's a safety issue, right? We do need you to dress appropriately, because we are teaching you to go into the workforce, and there are dress codes in, in workforce, right? Where does that look at? How do we position you to be successful?
So, um, just as a procedural matter, so I appreciate that we voted on number one, but we actually, we should not have by, should have voted on number two, and then.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I noticed that we did that, because we started voting and then we went to.
Sorry, okay, so, um.
For number two, so we just need to, a, a motion just to keep goal two as is?
So moved, oh, wait a minute.
No, no, I was gonna say second.
Second it?
All right.
Who seconded?
I did. Kelsey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I just have it seven zero, so let's move to number three.
God bless you, Deb.
I, I had some ways, I don't know if this will work for people, but.
Okay.
Anything you're reporting out is if it's identifiable, like.
Oh, no, no, just general data.
If only one student did X, do you know what I mean? If you're reporting out in public and only one student did X, that seems to be a good idea.
We don't need to have a, you don't need a name, just statistics, right?
But if.
This, you know, that it's only one student.
They're on, they're reporting on it.
I mean, I don't know, he gives, like, in your reports privately or whatever, I would.
No, we can't do the private report.
No, no, no.
Wait, so those incident reports that you send out a public notice? Like, the one, the email that we got recently about the chat, the student vote offense? That was a public incident?
No. Did I send it?
I sent you an email because she wasn't here.
Right. So it was communication.
Yeah, it's because we generally notify when someone is hurt. If, anytime that somebody is hurt here, whatever, we let you know, just in case you're hearing about it, or, you know, God forbid, you know.
So the standard remains the civil rights standard? So we know that, yeah, so we know we report out one incident.
We cannot reveal, um, information that would reveal any.
Identity, right, right.
But we can reveal out about trends.
Right.
So it should look like, it should look like that. There is a system for that.
Yeah, that's right.
And that would be measurable, too, if it's still, in the beginning of the year, it's this trend, and then that's going away. Well, okay, so what we're doing is working.
That's right.
Yeah, I think you need to use the baseline as the beginning of the year, because even, you know, obviously, things have changed this year, but even if you had the same system in place, you have a different population every year. And, and different classes have different characteristics. Some, I mean, you'll always hear in a school, oh, that, that, um, seventh grade class is a horror show compared to last year's.
I'm laughing because it was my son's class when he was in.
Okay, so, okay. Holly, I, I will propose some language. So let's hear what Holly has to say on the language.
So, I had, for the twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, superintendent will oversee the design implementation and monitoring syst- design, will design, implement, and monitor systems for accurate, accurately reporting student behavior, and will provide quarterly reports, I actually had to go through, to the school committee, um, regarding incidents overall, trends and strategies for addressing student conduct.
It's perfect language.
Yeah, that's good.
So moved.
All right, can you tell me again? The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, yep.
I'm trying, it's because I have a verb that's misplaced.
Superintendent.
Will oversee the design implementation.
Design. Implementation.
And monitoring. Monitoring, design, implementation, and monitoring systems. Will words with it a little bit, that one piece, but.
Right, the will, the will, the will is actually shall.
Yeah. For accurate, accurately reporting student behavior incidents. And will provide quarterly reports to the school committee regarding the number of incidents overall, strategies for addressing student conduct, and general trends. Okay.
Madam Chair, may I have a second?
Yes.
Oh, second, sorry.
First.
I thought you meant second, like, just speak, like, you had something else to say.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that, sorry about that. That's a good point, Deb.
Sorry. All right, everybody.
It's a long day.
We're getting punch drunk. All right, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I just have it seven zero. Three's done, number four?
I was actually gonna make this one harder for myself.
Really?
Well.
What's number three?
Maintaining or improving co-op numbers for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year, which is, I have no problem with, but what I would like to add to this is that we'll conduct a survey of our co-op employers, because what I want to understand is how satisfied they are with the technical skill level that our students have versus their expectations for our students' skill level.
Did you get that, Deb?
Should that be a separate goal, or should it be together?
I think it should.
No, I was gonna have it just all.
Okay.
No, it should be together. It is tied together, and they do go over that advisory as well.
Okay, maintaining or improving co-op numbers for the year, and conduct a survey of our co-op employers for student skills as compared.
To industry.
Conduct a survey of co-op employers to identify trends related to the technical skill level of co-op students. Sorry.
To identify the skill. To identify the skill level.
Of co-op students versus employer expectations.
It's a good one, that's really good.
Should we try to quantify that, like, you know, such percentage of satisfaction?
Information that I get will then inform our strategic plan.
The next goal, set of goals that we'll have in the, that we can put a number by that, okay.
All students and skills must get goal at the district level.
That's right. So, I'll entertain a motion for that one.
No, a motion was made, and then Deb started correcting the language.
Sorry, I'm behind here.
No worries.
Any second, we can second?
Alright, Kelsey seconded. Are you ready, Deb?
Tony, Kelsey.
I appreciate that addition.
Yeah, that's really good.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I have it seven zero. Sparkle number four is accomplished, check. Come on, number five.
Number five is.
Any objections?
That's my professional practice.
Okay, perfect, so I'll entertain a motion for that one.
So moved.
Alright, second, okay, second, Barbara. Alright, for the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, number five is done, seven zero. We did it, and now we have to.
We have to go into executive session.
Move into.
Before we go into executive session, I just wanna say, Christine, thank you for your leadership. You really, really brought us through on setting these goals, and Holly, thank you for being patient, because it was a very long process, so thank you very much.
So move to go into executive session, according to chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph eight three, which is necessary to discuss strategy in respect to negotiations and litigation. An open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, not to reconvene an open session to adjourn the meeting.
Roll call vote, Christine.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Andy.
And who is staying?
Deborah.
So, you be in.
This is literally a thirty, hopefully for your second.
We can make it longer if you like.
Boy, you have jokes. Have you not been looking at my face? Aye, aye, aye.
Fourteen hour day.
Right.
The technical.
Those pocket doors.
A little button right there on the side.